All right. Call to order, November fifth, twenty nineteen, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Uh, we're gonna start at the top. Eighteen twelve Turnpike Street, CNC Auto Corporation, request release of remaining bond funds, five thousand dollars plus interest.
All right, so this is a twenty sixteen site plan review. Um, they're requesting the, uh, release of five thousand dollars plus interest of their remaining performance guarantee bond. Um, they submitted their as built, um, plan as required by the decision, I've been out to the site, uh, making forms, and so, uh, I recommend the release of the, uh, remaining bond funds.
I guess, I think landscaping on that property is totally crappy. Uh, it really is pretty bad, I, and personally, I think we should hold some of the money back and get some better landscaping. It's a visible parcel on one fourteen, and it's really disappointing how it turned out. I, I'm sorry to be so blunt, but I, I think most people would agree with that. And I'm not sure it's consistent with what they said they were gonna do.
Well, it'd be my question if it was consistent with the plan.
It, it's, it's kinda what's there, but it's a little, you know, thin.
Well, I mean, so, I mean, yeah, my, I, I guess my question is, what? Was, do, can we get anything about what was in the decision regarding landscaping and the like?
Yep. So...
Doesn't meet the decision, that's one thing, if it's just not a good job, that might be another thing, so, get to see what it actually says.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall seeing anything about, in, you know, in perpetuity, I mean, you always have the, the, um, we always have the ability to go back in and, and review the site and say, you know, if it's reasonable to add more screening. I mean, you say that right here in the, uh, prior to final release.
That's my point, is that, uh, it doesn't look that good, it should look better. Um, and we, we, we do, we have that, that condition in there, it's one of our regular conditions. So, I mean, I, realizing that this is the first, we talked about it, you probably, you can't solve the problem right now, but, uh, I think it's fair to go, you know, look at the plan, look at the site, see where the, the screening is lacking, and get them to fix it up a little bit. I mean, I, I don't think it's very much money, it's probably, you know, less than a thousand dollars, but I think having better screening would make a big difference.
Like some additional, like, evergreens, or?
Or, you know, I mean, I don't wanna prescribe it unless, if you want us to, we will, but, you know, I mean, yeah.
Well, a little guidance as to what you're looking for is always helpful.
Yeah. I mean, you know, a, a little bit of decent landscaping, uh, for the property, uh, would help. I mean, you know, in some degree, you don't necessarily wanna have high primes there because, but you, you wanna have low screening, and there really isn't enough of it.
There is a condition too in the decision, that does any screening, as may be reasonably required by planning staff, will be added at the project owner's expense.
Right. You're condition seventeen.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I think you make a good point.
So, they have five thousand dollars remaining in their, in their bond, do you wanna hold back?
I would recommend holding it, we'll come back and talk about it the next time. I, I, I don't know if the applicant is here, but, uh, if they're not, why don't you contact them and tell them we wanna do that?
All right.
Yeah. So, okay, so, we need a motion of some sort.
I, I would make a motion to hold the bond, uh, for eighteen twelve Turnpike Street, and let's talk about a conversation with the, uh, the applicant owner, uh, about additional screening.
Right, would you like them to come back with, like, a revised, uh, landscape plan?
Yeah.
At that, okay.
That would be, yeah, perfect, yeah.
I'd like to see the actual plan.
Okay.
For, to me, the, oh, I, I mean, is it in here? I, I'd like to know, you know, it's marked that it's conformed with the plan, and to me, holding back bond money, part of it's the screening, although I don't know that we've had complaints about screening, so I'd wanna hear about that. And is whether it's, to me, it's more whether or not it conforms with the plan, so what kinda landscaping did they do on the plan? And what didn't they actually do, whether it was successful or not?
Okay.
Yeah, if we could have them in, that's fine, so a motion to hold this, um, hold the, hold the, hold the request, and have them in, um, so, motion made by Mr. Simons?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, two three oh two Turnpike Street, Earthworks, request release of remaining bond funds, fifteen thousand plus interest.
All right. Well, I'll give a little background, doesn't look like they're here. So, this is a twenty six, uh, site plan review, um, decision. Um, right now, it was, it was for the construction of a lands- uh, landscaping, uh, contractor's yard. Uh, I think you've seen it on, uh, Turnpike Street, you can see the, um, the landscaping outside. Um, one thing that they did have to do was, due to some of the landscaping, they moved the, uh, the snow clearance to, to the front. Um, I had that reviewed by, by police, conservation, we just wanted to make sure that there were no, um, issues with the snow storage being in front, no one had any issues with that. Um, they went before conservation about a month ago, and conservation released their, their bonds, and so they've come back to planning to ask for the release of their, of the remaining of fifteen thousand plus, um, for performance guarantee. And again, they've...
Right on Sharpness Pond Road, right?
Exactly, right on the corner.
Yeah. See, see, I think by contrast, I think they've done a much better job in terms of the landscaping and the grading and everything.
So, where on, on the, the site is the snow storage now?
So, so it's right on the frontage here, so, if I scroll into the plan, they put the snow storage right on the, on the front, going towards the parking. So, they left room, so there's no, um, so when you're leaving Sharpness Pond, you would still be able to see out on, uh, one fourteen. I had that confirmed with, um, with, uh, Daniel Lannan of the Police Department. So, we just wanted to...
So, it's on the corner, essentially?
It's actually kinda right in the, right in the middle. Like, here, where the parking is located, so it's not where the corner is, but it's more, um, in towards one fourteen.
I'm not really understanding what you're saying here is...
Yeah, let me bring that, let me bring that up.
And what was the issue with the planned location?
So, the one that was approved, they ended up putting, um, basically landscaping there, so you'll see, um, basically, it's a, it's a landscaped, um, uh, rain garden there, so you can't really put snow there anymore. See if I can bring that up, I'm sorry. There we go. Oh. That's not it, that would be great. Come on. Sorry, I'm fighting with my finger again. Come on. Just give me another minute, apologize.
We can do a couple other, we can do something else while we, wait to figure this out.
Yeah.
We gotta...
I'm getting the, uh, warning explanation point here.
Uh, communic- let's go to communications, we had a communication from Cricket Lane, I don't know if everyone saw that in our packet. Talks about a...
Yeah, they couldn't see them now, so I did that.
Old, uh, maybe subdivision and some legal questions. Um, so my thought was to, um, send that, refer that to town council, and maybe we can get some more, um, information and opinions about that, 'cause frankly, I'm not really sure what to do with that particular letter. Talks about, uh, some plans from a long time ago, and actions are not, inactions not taken by the planning board, and it seemed something that we may need some legal advice on, so. My thought was send, send, uh, refer that communication to town council to get some advice to the planning board. So, if that's good with Eric, we get a motion to refer that to the, the Cricket Lane communication to the town council?
Motion to refer to town council, Cricket Lane, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are we good, Monica?
We are good.
All right.
Okay.
So, back to two three oh two, yeah?
So, on the bottom portion on Sharpness Pond Road, you can see, um, over here, I don't know if you can see mine, I'm slowly moving, that was where the snow storage was supposed to go. But that is now a landscaped, um, rain garden.
Where are you referring to, uh, plan east?
So, look on the south, over here, so you can see the driveway over here, and then to the right of there, you can see where it says, like, wood, wood bridge, and it says as-built rain garden.
Mm-hmm.
That's actually where the snow storage was supposed to go, and instead, it has been, uh, moved to the frontage on, uh, one fourteen on Turnpike Street. So, it's right in front of, um, see, over here's the parking, right here towards the left, and then you can see the contouring over here, so it's right, it's in front, um, of the parking going towards one fourteen here.
So, playing west of the parking area?
Yes, exactly.
And that does not interfere with the sight line when you're pulling out from Sharpness on the Turnpike?
No, when I consulted with Daniel Lannan of the Police Department, I asked DPW what their thoughts were too, they didn't think it wasn't, were any issues. And we also, you know, we asked if there were any drainage problems with that, and then, you know, said it should be fine. And conservation, um, had those same issues, and so, um, those, they received the same answers, and so, what they did was they decided to re-release their performance guarantee bond.
Okay. Questions, comments? Got a motion to release the remaining bond funds for two three oh two Turnpike Street?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, eighteen twenty Turnpike Street, GFM General Contract Incorporated? Hello?
How you doing, uh, Brian Forman?
All right. Monica, wanna tell us about eighteen twenty Turnpike Street?
Yes, one of the older projects, it's, it's back to two thousand and seven. Um, it was actually right next to, uh, eighteen twenty at the strip mall, it's a special permit and common driveway. Um, that was constructed, the applicant actually, uh, I guess that they had requested a bond release years ago. They had, they had not, so, uh, they contacted us and provided a as-built plan, uh, which I'm bringing up here. Been out to the site, um...
This is, this is the office building?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, so that's been like that for a long time, all right. You guys just collecting interest?
Yes.
Absolutely, and actually, um, the, the current applicant was selling the building, found out there was a missing, an outstanding order of conditions, needed a certificate of compliance, so we went through a process with the, um, Conservation Commission, um, and then, uh, finally got the, um, certificate of compliance issued. Um, client thought he was done, and then realized that part of the bond money was actually the planning board, um, bond, so...
Okay. All right, we got a motion to release bond, the remaining bond funds for eighteen twenty Turnpike Street?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, A and R, Zero Salem Street, CMTF Limited Partnership, requests for endorsement of the approval-not-requiered plan. The applicant proposes to create two new lots, that's not really what you're proposing, right?
Yeah.
So, the applicant proposes to create, according to the applicant, one new lot, correct?
The applicant proposes to adjust the lot lines of one existing lot.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, that's the same thing, that's all.
Yeah, this is a resubmission, um, the board discussed at, at the last meeting. Um, the applicant did add a note, a note number two to the plan, just further explaining that this is a, uh, a one plot, um, A and R plan, rather than creating lots, so they intend to carve off these hatched portions, and at some later date convey it to the, uh, abutting property owners.
So, as I understand it, parcel three, which is map thirty, thirty seven D, I can't remember that, block one, uh...
So, it's this large portion on the back here, you can see the brook there, so that's the large portion. And what they're proposing is where these hatch marks are along, um, Salem Road, so between map three seventy, block twenty-three, um, you see that, that small hatch area.
And parcel two and parcel one, these ones, are all part of this big parcel, everything is currently part of parcel three, right?
Yes.
It's all part of one?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, and then the outlined ones are all separately owned parcels, correct? Okay, so as I understand the plan now, is that it's just to carve off those two, that they're both marked as not abusable parcel. And therefore, the applicant suggests that it is not a subdivision, because it is not dividing a parcel into two or more lots. Um, that's...
So, again, so I'm clear, the hash piece was part of the big thing, and now it's being moved to the other lot, and that's the only thing?
No, that they're just carving it out into, right, into individual, into individual parcels. That's the only thing that they're, these two triangles, own triangles are becoming their own individual parcels.
Wait, are you saying the, the existing house lots were not on separate lots before?
No. These are owned by someone else, these are owned, these are, these are not part of it.
Right, okay, so...
And these are owned by other entities.
Right, so it's, but it's the two hash pieces that are being combined, that's all.
Well, no, there's no... No, they're not being combined, they're separated.
No, I mean, they're being combined with, uh, oh, they're being separated.
The existing condition is that all three parcels are, are one parcel right now.
And John, I think you're asking if this is gonna be combined, it's not.
It's gonna be separate.
This is gonna be taken out, this will be separate, this will be separate, not combined.
Okay, so...
No, no, there's a note that says that, that that is to be combined, is that correct?
Um, no, what it, what it says is that parcels one and two are non-budable parcels. If the owner later decides to try to convey them later, that's the, the owner's...
Okay.
Yeah.
...prerogative, however, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, because they're, um, seeking to purchase the, the remainder of that parcel three, the eleven plus acres of it, without those two little non-budable parcels. Those would be excluded from the, from the purchase, and so we're just seeking to modify the lot lines for, the, the property address is, is zero Salem, it's shown there as three, parcel three.
And so, last time, we had a discussion about whether or not the...
Can you scroll back up?
Whether or not the frontage on Dale Street allowed for access, and whether that access was illusory or not, and I think what the applicant pointed in the materials they submitted, and the case law submitted, is it doesn't matter, because it's not a subdivision, because they're not make, these are not considered lots under the law, because they're not budable.
Yeah, they're, and as long as there's no, that they're not budable, I think it's...
Correct, as long as it's marked not budable, which is what the case law suggests. Um, so, I think that we have to, uh, approve the A and R based on that?
Okay.
So, we don't even get to frontage and all of that, 'cause they're not multiple...
No, I just wanted to say, I, yeah, uh...
Questions, comments?
I think it's fine.
Yeah, okay, uh, obviously, if they ever, you know, try, need to combine and build, they may need variances and things like that, this doesn't guarantee any, uh, conformity with the zoning bylaw, and it obviously doesn't meet the zoning bylaw, but that's not our prerogative at the moment.
Correct, and the endorsement, uh, we have that block underneath your signatures.
Okay, so, can we get a motion?
May I have a couple comments, I know it's on a public hearing, is it the last hearing, no?
No, no, we're just, they're, really, I looked at the case law based on this, and we really don't have any discretion.
Well, that wasn't the point, but, okay, I mean, we rescinded the hearing yesterday, I would've had some written comments for you, but that's...
We really can't even really accept comments, it's on an A and R plan, that's, it's not a hearing. Um, so, uh, can we get a motion to a, approve, or to, um, instruct the planner or assistant planner to endorse the A and R plan?
As it does not constitute a subdivision.
Yes, as it does not, as it legally does not constitute a subdivision, so we have, uh, that's no other choice.
Yeah. So, moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, your A and R is approved.
I'd have the, uh, the my law, may I leave it this evening with you for endorsement? Have it available to you tomorrow? That would be fantastic, thank you.
Okay, great. Five, new public hearings, five hundred Grape Pond Road, North Andover Country Club, application for a watershed special permit under Part Five Watershed Protection District, and Section ten point seven of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The applicant proposes the construction of an eight hundred and seventeen square foot expansion of the clubhouse, and one hundred and sixty-four square foot expansion of a patio with associated landscaping in the non-discharge zone and non-disturbance zone. The project is located within the residential one R one zoning district.
Well, how to get up, uh, set up, why don't I give you a little background on this, where we stand on the application? Um, so again, this application was submitted, uh, to planning for a watershed special permit, uh, to allow for an expansion of the clubhouse and, um, and patio work. Um, work is located outside of the non-discharge zone and non-disturbance zone. The applicant is also scheduled to go before the ZBA, uh, due to the expansion of the structure, um, so they haven't gone before them yet, but they are scheduled to go before them. The application was sent, uh, for review by our stormwater consultant, um, they're still gonna be providing information, and of course, typically, it, it will open with the ZBA, and they'll probably grant their, you know, determination at some point soon.
Okay, so, um, plan for tonight will be, we'll hear from you guys, tell us about the project. Members of the public want to make comments, they can, we're not gonna vote on anything tonight. Generally, until you get your relief from the ZBA, we're not gonna vote, because we don't know what we're actually voting on, right? Um, so, uh, and we wanna hear the stormwater comments and all of that. So, with that being said, tell us what you'd like to do.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, my name is Tom Childs, I'm here on behalf of North Andover Country Club, and tonight with me is our general manager, Jeff Isbell, and Chris Huntress from Huntress Associates, who you probably know well, and he knows North Andover planning well. Um, so we're here to help you better understand the project that we wanna do, which is a roughly eight hundred square foot addition, two-story addition on the lake side of the building, the existing structure. Um, it's located right beside where you approved a brick patio two years ago. So, those of you that were here two years ago are familiar with the site. Um, if you, uh, if you have been out there, the location of the existing deck on the lake side of the building is where is the footprint of the addition, and it'll be a basement level and that deck level, and then we will also be adding a deck on the lake side of the addition, as well as some expansions to the existing stone patio as shown on the drawing. So, we're here tonight to, um, answer any questions you might have. I have a cold, so I'm gonna defer to Chris and Jeff, uh, for any questions you might have.
I guess tell us a little bit about, so what is, what's gonna be the, what's the addition going to be used for? What's gonna be made out of?
I'm gonna let you speak.
So, so, the, the whole concept really is just to sort of stay relevant, the building was built twenty-six years ago, and, and people's usage of the club has certainly changed a lot since then, so this started as a, a kitchen renovation project, and as anyone who's ever even does something at home, that usually cascades down. So, we're, um, going to be upgrading our dining spaces, um, the outdoor patio now, or sorry, the deck, we needed to enlarge that, 'cause we're creating a more bar concept, which we don't really have now. Um, and beneath that, we're putting in a, a golf simulator room for instruction. Um, right now, that's a de facto storage area, so just utilizing our space better, um, is really the goal, and just try to stay current with trends in the industry.
Golf, something you can use in winter?
We brought, we brought a lot of things, yes.
Yeah, pictures would be great at this point.
Here's a rendering. So, existing clubhouse, you're looking at it, a view from the lake. So, this is the additional deck that will be added, and this room right here is the room where the deck is now, and it will be a two-story addition. And then a small expansion of this existing brick patio is the one you approved two years ago.
With the fire pit, is that...
Yeah. Correct.
What's this two-story addition, can you point to that?
So, it's this gable right here.
That's gonna be...
All, all these other roof lines are existing, so this is the area right there.
And then the patio in front of it as well?
Yeah, well, this is the existing, yeah, the deck, right here.
So, you're saying the deck would be new, and the two-story portion of the building where you pointed to the roof?
Correct.
And what's the total square feet?
Eight hundred and seventeen...
You're saying the deck was, the first floor was here, and the deck was the top of it?
So, the current, the deck currently exists in this space here.
Okay.
Um, and so we're just pushing that out a little, we're proposed to push that out.
What's underneath that deck?
Um, presently, there's a...
Not the, the proposed one?
That'll be, it'll be recreating what we do now, so it'll be just this sort of lattice work, and then it'll be open, we store pole golf carts in there, so it's a dirt area.
Un-finished. The deck will be built on pilings, the addition will have a solid perimeter foundation under.
And how will you do the drainage, or for the, refine the, the new piece?
So, the drainage that was taken into effect for the, uh, brick patio is plenty of, of, uh, capacity there to accommodate the roof line that we'll be adding right there, and that's documented on the plan.
So, but I, I, I'm just trying to understand, like, will you, uh, is it gutters, or how, how does it just help physically go?
There'll be two gutters and go into a perforated pipe.
Okay.
What are, what are you going before the ZBA for? There's a relief you're seeking there?
Chris, what, what's the definition of that?
The record, Chris Huntress with Huntress Associates, we're landscape architects, uh, out of Andover. We're going in front of the, um, uh, the zoning board for variance, uh, as required under the bylaw, under Section one ninety-five point four one nine, and specifically, it calls out, because there's an enlargement of the existing clubhouse structure by less than twenty-five percent, the overall gross floor area, so that's what they need to, to review and approve.
Okay.
We filed the applications almost concurrently, but I believe we're, in the next week or two, we'll be...
We're on the agenda for the next year.
Okay. Okay. Um, anybody else have questions, comments?
Yes, we have our, uh, we did...
We've requested stormwater review, it's not back yet.
We're still waiting, okay.
Yeah.
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 And where on this drawing is the pool?
So, the pool is, can I show you?
Please.
So, this drawing, the, the actual clubhouse is right here, here's the fire pit patio, and the pool is right here.
Nacho.
Nacho.
So, that's the patio that's already approved?
Yes, that's the fire pit. Yes, that's the fire pit.
While you're up here, where's the new deck and new structure?
Here's the new deck. Here is the existing deck, which will be the new structure right here.
Oh, yeah.
And this is the existing clubhouse.
Got it.
Like so.
So I, I actually have a question if, if I can.
Yeah, please.
Well, maybe not. You tell me. On the Huntress October 3rd memo, all the way at the end, you list the previous applications.
Yeah.
Going back to 1996. So I was just curious, when was the, the playground done? And I was curious why that wasn't on your list. That's located between the pool and the lake shore. It's a chain link fenced area with playground equipment and.
I might have to get back to that unless one of you gentlemen know one that.
I don't know. I wasn't part of that project.
Yeah.
I can look that up and I'd be happy to.
I'm just curious why it's not on the list, yeah.
I am now too.
Yeah, is that something you could?
Be happy to look that up.
Is that okay to let us know on that?
Yeah. It may have been part of one of the other permits and not called up, so I'll find out. Couple of other things of merit that might be worth noting. On the civil engineer's sketch that you see there, we are replacing some of the, the existing pump and grease trap that goes along with the kitchen now. And it, it hasn't gone defunct or, or broken in any way, but it just, you know, while we're doing this, it makes sense to replace those structures because they do have some age to them, so we think that'll be a benefit to the lake. The other thing that's important to note here is that there's very little, almost no grading associated with this project because it really touches right down into existing grade. And the limit that you see there of the silt sack, which runs just around the perimeter of the improvements, will be the limit of, of any work, including staging and everything else, which is fairly well confined around the footprint of the existing building.
Any members of the public have anything they want to say on this particular project? Nope, okay, all right. Our next meeting is the 26th. So, give me enough time to get everything back. Okay, comfortable come back November 26th.
We'll be here.
We'll continue this public hearing for November 26th. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to thank the country club for participating in the lake cleanup day.
We dodged a few ticks. That was the big fear, but we always have to keep that clean.
Well, appreciate your support in keeping the lake clean. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving right along. 315 Turnpike Street, Verizon Wireless. Application for Wireless Service Facility Special Permit Site Plan Review. Under Part Eight Wireless Service Facilities in Section 10.7 of the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. The project consists of the installation of 16 camouflaged antennas on the rooftop of the Rogers Center with supporting equipment. The project is within the residential three R3 zoning district. Excuse me, hello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record again, and, sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. For the record, Victor Manugian from McLean Middleton Professional Association, 900 Elstree, Manchester, Hampshire, appearing on behalf of Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. And as Mr. Chairman stated, we're here seeking a site, a special permit and site plan review for a rooftop facility at the Rogers Center located at 315 Turnpike Street, which is in a R3 zone. We were here last for a pre-application conference on September 17th and we got some feedback and we redid the photo sims based on that feedback, which I will get into shortly. The site, if we can go to the next sheet, which is C1, is displayed right here. And the facility is, focus in. This is the building we're going on top of. That's the Rogers building. I'll show you photo sims later. This is the building next door, which is the Mendel Science Center, which has the stacks that we're trying to mimic and camouflage ours to look like that. So the antennas will be on the rooftop, camouflaged inside a fiberglass stack, which will be painted to match the existing stacks on the Mendel Science Center. And if I can go just forward right now to Sheet 8.3, which is the last sheet. In addition to the antennas on the roof, we have a ground lease space of 11 feet by 18 feet and eight inches. Within that space, there'll be a concrete slab, which is four feet by 11 feet, right here, where our equipment will sit, which is the equipment cabinets and battery cabinets. There's no generator at, at this site. And the, the 11 by 18 lease area will be surrounded by this brick facade screening, which will match the existing brick on the building at the site. We've submitted, among other things, the key things we've submitted are zoning drawings, a radio frequency report, an RF emissions report, and a view shed analysis. And all the authors of those work products are here. If the board has any questions, then I'll introduce them as we go along as we need them.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just so that I'm clear on this, the equipment and battery cabinets, they're on the roof?
No, I'm sorry. This, what I depicted here is the ground. The equipment, the battery cabinets and the equipment are on the ground inside the fenced and brick facade.
And where relative to the building is this site?
This is off to the right of the building. We'll, we'll see that. If we can go to A2, please, that'll show it. Thank you. So it's right here and it's, if you're looking from Route 114, it's to the right side of the building.
The left side of the building. The right side is the existing block wall. We are matching that block wall. Steve McGovern.
Sorry.
SAI Communications on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I'm the site act manager. So, if you're standing in the parking lot with 114 behind you and you're looking at the back door of the Rogers Center for the parts, there is an existing brick screen wall to the right. This one is going to match it to the left. That door is right in the middle of your, of your pitch.
How tall are the stacks on top of the roof?
10 feet.
And again, they match the stacks on the adjacent science center.
Which are what?
10 feet, 10-foot stacks.
What kind of, of, where?
I believe that they are exhaust. In many cases, they're exhaust. They're all lined up in a row.
Okay.
I'm not sure if any are false, but they are, they are stacks.
Is this the same height and number of stacks that we talked about at the last meeting?
Yes, it is, but I will say we misspoke about the height then. I, I misspoke and I said a lot shorter than 10 feet. I apologize.
So what was it last time? 30 inches?
I think so.
I thought it was 36 inches.
And that was the width. These are 30-inch round, 10-foot high to match.
That's correct. That was, I apologize. That was my fault.
The same number of stacks as we talked about last time?
Yes, 16 antenna, 16, yes, for the 16 antennas.
Let's see, that, that didn't sound right to me, but.
I remember you asked about that.
Right? Because I thought they were 30 feet and then 30 inches sounded really good.
Yes, it did.
Right? So, you should, you should always lead with 30 feet and then say you're coming down to 10. That's a negotiation.
So, with that, I'd like to go to the photo sims, which are called view shed analysis in your packet.
And I assume the, the college has seen all of this in his, his favor?
Absolutely. They're, they're 100% with us. I've submitted a copy of the lease, notice of lease that's recorded, which gives us the rights to put the equipment both on the roof and the ground. And they're fully aware. They know about this meeting.
And what are, and what are these, the cellular capacity? What is it that you're trying to accomplish by putting it in these, this particular location?
So it's, it's to address a, a gap in, a gap in coverage and, and other issues such as capacity. An RF engineer who did the RF report will, will speak to that as to show why we need this location to address the needs of Verizon Wireless customers.
Will also address, I assume, why you didn't use other potential locations?
Yes.
Okay.
And we also have the RF emissions report to talk about, this is the right one. If we could flip it, please. You don't want me explaining it like this. I already messed up a right and left side. So while she's doing that, so we, our, our photo sims were taken from eight locations. Of those eight locations, which I will review when, when we get to the pictures, it's clearly visible from two of those locations. It's not visible at all from two locations. And from the other locations, it's visible right over the roof line, but at, sort of hidden by tree branches and leaves, at least until a few weeks ago.
All right, you're not cooperating. Yeah, it's not, it's not cooperating. Yeah.
Okay, I can, I can go through, I can go through.
The other, the other ones are the right orientation.
Okay.
So, we took it from, we took the photo sims from eight location, locations. Location one was a view from the northeast from Rock Ridge Road. And if you look at your pictures, the first one shows it without the antennas. The second picture on page four shows it with the antennas and that's a clearly visible from that site. Location two is a view from the east from Flaherty Road. I'm sorry? No, I said, I had two clearly visible views, two not visible views.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
On this, on this page?
Oh, because of, because of the.
It only shows four stacks.
Because you can't see the antennas that are on the other side.
Because they're further back?
They're further back or off to the right and left.
Angle of sight precludes you seeing it?
That's correct. So if you look on the, on the site plans, on the site plan on Sheet A1, it, it shows the four locations on the roof that the antennas will be. So there's four different orientations on the roof.
How far apart are those locations on the roof? Just roughly, how many feet apart?
Maybe very slightly.
10 feet, 20 feet, 50 feet apart?
About 20 feet, 20 to 30 feet, 20 to 30 feet in like four quadrants. And that, and they're always set back the required distances from the edge of the roof. But yeah, four quadrants on the roof. So location two was, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Not visible. That was taken from Flaherty Road. Location three was taken from the Mendel Science Center and it is visible partially over the roof line of the building and there's some trees blocking it. Location four is taken from the southwest from Walsh Way. That's clearly visible on, in those, in that angle. Location five is from the west from Walsh Way. And again, that's partially visible on the roof with trees blocking some of the stacks. I can see two. Location six also visible with some trees blocking some of the antennas on that view. Location seven, the view from Turnpike Street, again, is partially visible with trees, through the trees. And lastly, location eight is the picture we took of the roof of the Mendel Science Center at the planning board's request to show the series of stacks that we are trying to mimic. As you can see, there's a lot of them on there compared to the numbers we have, but we're, we're matching that look and the color exactly when we install them on the roof and, and paint them. So, with that, I'm, I can turn it over to my RF report engineer, RF emissions reporter, or if you have questions now.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about the views? I appreciate that you took these and that you gave us, I think, what we asked for in terms of the views. Anyone have any additional questions at this point?
What's the, what's the reason they're 10 feet high? Is that a technical issue?
The antennas or?
This is Han from Hudson Design Group. We are the engineering firm for this project. So the antenna, when you come by, come up.
Come up, yeah.
Yeah, this is Hong Yan Han from Hudson Design Group. We are the engineering firm for this site. The antenna itself was six foot plus we got a cable was below, so 10 foot is kind of like a perfect size to host the antenna.
Showing six feet above the existing roof? Oh, that's a center, six feet center line above existing roof.
Yeah, that's correct. The roof is 48 feet and the center line of the antennas are at 54 feet. So it'll be six feet from the top of the roof.
I was, I was going to suggest as well, the stacks on the adjacent building are 10 feet tall.
So these stacks are six feet or 10?
The stacks are 10 feet to mimic the, the science center stacks. And the antennas themselves are six feet within it. And as, as Han said, you need some room for the cabling and the wiring in addition to trying to match and camouflage the science center building.
So could they be lower?
They could be lowered.
How much lower?
A foot or two?
Obviously, a foot.
Han says a foot to, to keep the equipment not visible, the wiring, et cetera.
Just seems odd that if we're trying to camouflage, we're making it taller than it needs to be.
Well, I mean, at the same time, that's what I was saying. You want to make sure you have enough room. You got to go in and fix something or need a little extra space. You don't want to have to do it twice.
And again, these match the adjacent stacks, which are 10 feet tall. So as a matter of symmetry, we thought it would be, you know, advisable to match what's there.
Do you usually do 10? I, I, I guess, it's just an interesting question. If there were 15-foot stacks or 20-foot stacks, do you guys usually use it as 10 or 6 or 8 or just trying to?
We, we don't need that tall.
No, I'm just wondering what you normally do. Like, do you normally try to match it around? Or do you, like, say there were no other stacks around, what height would you put them in?
Normally, we go 10 foot.
Normally, you go 10 foot. Okay, all right. Does you already have the models at 10 foot?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And most time by law, they don't want. The building are different height, right?
No, the buildings have different heights. Our building is 48 feet. With the proposed stack, it would be 58 feet. The, that's a real hard question because the Mendel Science Center and Steve McGovern went to the college and pulled out proposed plans. We don't have the as-built that you have here, but he pulled out proposed plans. The science center roof, just the roof, is about 41 feet, three inches. To the base of the parafit that's on the roof, without the, the round part, to the base of that round parafit that sticks way up, that's 45.4. That's forty-five point four, forty-five feet, four inches. Again, these are from the plans we found in engineering. And, um, the, um, base of the dome, I misspoke. The parafit is forty-five point, forty-five feet, four inches. The base of the dome at the top of the Science Center is at fifty-five feet, ten inches. And when you add the radius of the dome to get to the top of the dome, we calculated that to be sixty-four feet, one inches. So there's a lot of additional things going on on top of the Science Center. Besides for the additional ten feet for the stacks.
Where on the roof are, is the antenna, right?
So if you look on, um, sheet A1. It shows the four locations that the antennas will be. There's arrows to one of them and it says, you know, it says proposed, um, stacks, et cetera. And what's going to be in them, the antennas, et cetera. And the, and the remote radio heads and other equipment that's hidden inside the stack.
People review, the department review, ten feet is the maximum they can go anyway. Okay, why don't we hear, hear from the RF engineer?
Good evening. My name is Keith Valenti with C Squared Systems. Business address is sixty-five Dartmouth Drive, Auburn, New Hampshire. We prepared the RF report, that was included in the package, dated September ninth, two thousand nineteen. Within that report, it describes the need for the site and how it fits within Verizon's network. And that report at the end has five maps that are usually helpful to explain. So if you can scroll to the end, please. I can briefly describe each one. I don't know if there's a, is there a way to rotate it? No, okay. Okay. Well, it, within that map, or within the report, as I said, there, there's five attachments towards the end. And the first set of attachments, attachments A and B, present Verizon's coverage with and without the proposed site on Rogers Center. And this scenario is somewhat unique in the sense that there's, there's actually two sites involved. And kind of improving the coverage in this area around Merrimack College campus. But the overarching intent is to, you know, improve coverage to the area, which in turn improves capacity on Verizon's network. At present, if you look on the map on the screen, there's a site labeled North End over four. That's a guide tower off of Prescott Street. That tower, as you may know, sits up on a hill, roughly a hundred and twenty feet or so above the ground elevation at the campus. So what happens is that, that particular site is covering a large area. And what happens with, uh, the usage nowadays is the networks are struggling to keep up with all the demand on, on, on their networks. Particularly when you have a college campus right, right at the edge of the coverage and you have Route 114. Which, you know, handles quite a bit of traffic. I think in our report, we noted, serves about forty-two thousand cars per day, per mass DOT. And then you also have the intersection of Route twenty-five in the area handling over twenty-six thousand cars per day. So it's quite a bit of vehicular traffic. You have the student body population on the campus itself. And then certainly there's a, you know, residential developments off Route 114 that are also, you know, contributing the usage demand in that area. So if we scroll to the next map, oh, which I should introduce here. So on this map, we're showing, um, coverage areas shown in green and yellow. And what those two depict is Verizon holds FCC licenses in multiple frequency bands. The lower frequency bands tend to cover a larger area, provide that base level of coverage. And then they also overlay higher frequency bands, which don't propagate as well, but they, you know, add overall capacity to the network. So those, those network layers, you know, work together to provide the service. But they don't cover necessarily uniformly. So the yellow is presented, is that's their, what's twenty-one hundred megahertz coverage, the AWS coverage band. So that's the highest license that they hold, that they deploy 4G service on. And then seven hundred megahertz is the green. And you can see how the green provides a, you know, much broader area, whereas the, the yellow coverage from that higher AWS band is, is somewhat limited. So in and around the campus, it's kind of on the edge of that higher band coverage. So if we scroll up to the next map. The white is an area where neither the seven hundred nor the, the twenty-one hundred megahertz coverage provides, you know, a level that, that Verizon considers to be reliable in those areas. So those, those would be, you know, your deeper coverage gaps where you, you struggle to maintain any sort of connectivity of the network. So if we can go to the next map, we can show that yellow area expands particularly along Route 114 and the campus. Now, traditional, you know, coverage maps you may seen, you see, you see a large, you know, coverage gap and then how it fills in nicely. As you can see, the density of the sites in this network, and particularly because that North End over site is situated up on a hill, it has a good view of the area. It covers, you know, fairly well into the area. There is some service on the campus, but a-again, it goes back to the capacity need and, you know, the intent to, to serve the users located on that campus. Which is why we, you know, Verizon decided to, you know, dedicate two sites to, to serve that, that dense hotspot of, of usage in the area. And I think the next set of maps do a little better job of, of presenting it visually. What we show here is that one sector facing, if I rotate my head, southwest. From that guide tower towards Route 114, you can see it covers a large area, including the campus. And that's just a lot of network traffic it has to handle. So the intent of the proposed site in the Rogers Center and then a, another planned site on the Monican Center, also on the campus. Is intended to kind of alleviate the demand on that, that sector from that guide tower and allow it to relax and better serve areas closer to it. If we go to the next map, you can see how the two sites kind of, that, that red area, you know, shrinks. And now it's no longer burdened with providing coverage on the campus. Those two sites take that over and allows, uh, all the sites in the area to perform a little better from a capacity and, and an optimization standpoint. And the last map I have, attachment E. This is, this is just sort of helpful, explain why these coverage areas are irregular. The, the whiter and red shades, those are the higher ground elevations. And then the darker blues and greens, that, those are your valleys and lower elevations. So you can see that North End over four site off of Chestnut Street. It sits right up on a little knoll, it's on a tower. Verizon's at a hundred and ten feet on that tower. It has a nice view of, of that valley. So that's why it's, it's covering a large area. And it's, it's kind of, you know, doing a little too much with, with the network demand today. So that's a general discussion of, you know, the intent of the site and how it fits in the network. And how it provides a more robust network for Verizon.
Can I just ask a question on, um, the beginning of the report talks about the proposed facility. And it says eight, eight panel antennas, two per sector. Mounted with thirty inch outer diameter fiberglass stacks. Are we talking about eight total stacks or sixteen total stacks on?
The, the antennas, my understanding is that there's eight antennas, however, there are sixteen faux stacks to, for, for, I believe it's for symmetrical appearance.
So there's two extra stacks at each spot in there taller than.
Eventually, yeah. Yeah, so Verizon's intent is to eventually have four antennas per sector. The way it was modeled has two antennas per sector right now. But they intend to add on those later. That's why we submitted it with four per sector.
Okay.
But no matter how you do it, whether it's two, 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 or four, 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 there's only four stacks. Four sets of antennas on the roof. But yes, eventually it will be four antennas per sector.
So there are sixteen stacks, but only eight of them are going to be active now.
Correct. Asking for more now rather than coming back.
Yeah, and, and I apologize. Keith has the, the prior plan. When, when we updated the plans that are submitted with you, they do show four per sector for a total of sixteen. And that was for future need.
Additional questions, comments?
So why is the Roger Center the best place for these antennae? What other locations did you look at? Take us through that process.
Sure. Think you're going to need RF? I can just, if you'd like.
Good evening again, Stephen McGovern for the record, SAI Communications on behalf of Verizon Wireless. In a nutshell, I have been working with Merrimack College on this site since October of two thousand fifteen. And I acquired the site from a predecessor who was leaving my company, who had been working on it for approximately eighteen months prior. It's been a long relationship. It's been something that we've been trying to do together. As corporations go, the college certainly has priorities of, of, of teaching students and building out its campus in other ways, et cetera. We are finally at the point where we were able to consummate a lease and bring it in front of you folks for your approval and consideration. Initially, we had started out looking here at the McQuade Library. It was centered campus, et cetera. It had other values. And part of the reason that we, it took us a while is because halfway through this process, Merrimack looked at us and said, gee. We think we're going to do other things on that roof. Could you please consider moving it to the Rogers Center? So we analyzed and that's what we did at their request. This site going way back when has always had the intention of covering the students at Merrimack College. A lot for the reasons that Keith just presented to you. This campus has had a dearth of coverage. It hasn't had the capacity that it needs. Again, I'm no RF engineer, but I hear the stories when I'm speaking to the college. Our parents can't reach, reach our students, their students, their kids, please help. Things of that nature have come to me over time. So this is part of the reason as well, I believe that it only has two antennas in there is because our intention is to cover this campus first and foremost. From the perspective of granting coverage and signal to a campus with students, with phones, with tablets, with laptops that may or may not be on the network. With the college's own devices that may or may not be on the network. We know the capacity is needed there and that's why we're there and that's why we've been working toward it. So as far as other outside influencers that we've looked at, frankly, there haven't been many. Because it has been our objective all along to help Merrimack gain the coverage that they need. And again, I've been working directly with them for a long time on this. I am aware of, for example, if you look right there at Andover Two, that's pretty close. In fact, it's very close, but it, look at the height, it's only forty feet above AGL. In part because of the requirements that you guys and your, your cohorts present to us. They're, you're asking us to fill a gap in coverage from low, from stealth modes, from, from rooftops that already exist. That's what we've found here and that's what we've found on campus. Andover Two is a macro site for Verizon Wireless on a nearby area to where we are now. I think it's only about a half a mile away, give take, on one twenty-five.
Do you know what, it's located on?
I, I do not. I do not know which building that is. Do you know which building that is?
Four oh one Andover, see, I think it's the McGary Office.
Four oh one Andover Street, McGary Law Office. Right, yes, right, exactly right. So being that close, we still haven't been able to solve this problem. That's why we wanted to be right smack on campus. And that's why the campus has supported us in this endeavor.
And also existing buildings at the height that works for zoning and on our needs.
I mean. It's usually when I get, we get the Celta applications, like the first question is like, are you just like immediately offended by it? And this one looks pretty good, to be honest. It looks, this is what we want, you know, right.
It's exactly what we want. We want something in building that's disguised, that has a minimal impact.
Right. Ten feet on an existing building, mirroring other, kind of, I mean, it looks brick with the stacks. I mean, um, on a college campus, not really impacting anybody else. I mean, it's kind of what the bylaw looks for.
And if I may point out one thing that was brought up earlier, Walsh Way, once you're on Walsh Way, you are securely on that campus. Those photo sims are from inside the campus. They're not even from outside in the neighborhood.
Okay, um, is there any members of the public that want to comment on, on this? Okay, uh, where do we stand with peer review and things of that nature?
So we still need to send it out for peer review, which I, I, you know, which is part of the, um.
Part of the bylaw?
Exactly.
Okay.
So that'll be going out with your, you know, with your blessing, of course, which.
Yeah, let's do that.
There, the applicant's going to supply a plan showing the average heights within three hundred feet, which is part of the, the bylaw. So they should have that by the next meeting?
Yeah, we, we got some rough numbers, but we'll have a plan that shows the heights. Before you go further, do you want to hear from our RF emissions report expert about safety? If not, we don't have to, it's in.
It's in the report, right?
It's in the, it's submitted.
I think we're good. Um, timeframe on getting peer review and all of that?
That, I have to follow up where they stand on that. We could go with, um, the peer reviewer who's very recommend, well recommended by, um, other towns. We've used them before. There's one other company too, which may have some, so I don't know if you want me to.
I don't, I want to do what's required by the bylaw, but I don't think we need as expansive a review as we had last time.
Okay.
So.
Point taken.
Let's, I, I just want to hit the, hit, is there a coverage gap? Alternatives, um, really the, you know, the, the factors that I think Suzanne identified last time under the federal law. Like just really look at their data, look at any other data, hit those factors, tell us if it meets it and kind of end it there. Okay, so when do you guys want to come back?
We could be ready for your next meeting, but I don't know if your consultant will be ready.
Right.
Oh, we can touch them first thing in the morning?
Well, why don't we have you come back? I mean, you can always touch base with Monica. I mean, I, I think we're going to have to look at that data, give anyone else. I don't think there's going to be a lot of, um, comment about this, but I'd like to at least give it one more meeting in case there is public comment. And then hopefully we can have that information from our peer reviewer, discuss that, get your remaining information and then hopefully vote on the meeting after that. That would be ideal situation. Okay, so continued until November twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Ron.
Alright, thank you. Thank you for presenting the things that we asked you to present, so we appreciate that. Okay, uh, next, continuing right along. For High Street Avalon Bay Communities, Inc. Application for Sub District A Definitive Master Plan Special Permit. In accordance with the Town and North Andover zoning bylaw, section one ninety-five, eighteen point two. Applicant proposes the construction of a market rate rental multi-family residential community, being known as Avalon North Andover. Says consisting of a total of two hundred and fifty units, now that's two hundred units, I believe. One, two and three bedrooms, so we should correct that if that's officially what we're correcting. But, uh, units to be contained within two separate four to five story buildings of approximately a hundred and three thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven square feet. And approximately a hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet. Along with an outdoor pool, parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage and other improvements to be located on approximately nine point four four acres of land. Products located within the downtown overlay district, A historic mill area. Underlying IS and R four zoning districts with all buildings within the IS district. Hello?
Hi.
I'm doing just peachy. What do we got?
Uh, thanks for having us back. David Gillespie from Avalon Bay Communities. With me is Ed Bradford from TAT, our architect. And also Brian Huntley from Ty &amp; Bond is going to speak as well, our civil engineer. The last time that we spoke in. I think the last time that we spoke in September, there were really five things from my notes that we were asked to continue to look at based on the three D images that we showed. First would be, look further at changes to the massing, based on butter concerns. Submit a revised fiscal impact. Submit a revised traffic memo, including a discussion on a Walker Road connection. Revised plans with numbers, so that we, you know, the board could effectively evaluate our proposal and coordinate the subdivision with the site plan. So, those things were all accomplished between that meeting and tonight. I'm gonna lead tonight briefly with just an overall summary of the numbers, because I think there is a focus on that generally, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Ed, who's gonna walk through the massing. So, on the left-hand side is the original submission from May, and the current submission today. Two hundred fifty units previously, two hundred units now, then broke it down between the two buildings. Building A was previously ninety-seven units, now it's ninety-eight, so it's substantially the same size.
And which building is building A?
Building A is the one that's closer to Sutton Pond, and the other one is, and building B is the one that's closer to the High Street neighbors. Building B was reduced by fifty, fifty-one units. The mix, as you can see from a percentage basis, is similar, within one or two, one percentage point of any given breakdown. Total square footage has gone down proportionally. Lot area is a little bigger because of the subdivision road change to align with the East Mill driveway, which Brian can touch on when he speaks later. So, lots two and three, which are the subject parcels for Avalon, are a little bit bigger. FAR is down from, you know, the allowed FAR for this site is one, under the overlay, we were at point six seven, now we're at point five five. Parking spaces were over three hundred and fifty parking spaces, which is over the required amount in the overlay district, and well above what I think I need to actually service the project. Number of stories, we were consistently five stories before, now we have steps in the building A and building B, so that their corners are down to four stories, and the infill area is five stories. And wetlands filling, which was a major topic with Conservation Commission, was formerly almost four thousand square feet, and now it's none. So, just wanted to touch on the numbers, because I know there was a specific question related to that, and with that, I'm gonna turn it to Ed, and he can walk through some massing and sections similar to what you've seen previously.
Great.
Yeah, good evening, Ed Bradford with TAT, and I have a series of exhibits for you this evening, just to walk through the evolution of the design, to kinda highlight some of those numbers that Dave just had on the table. So, starting as I did at the prior meeting in September with the original design, and using this massing model, or computer model, three D model, set into the context of the neighborhood to kinda illustrate changes. So, again, this first exhibit is showing...
Submitted the traffic report and the fiscal impact report, we have that in our packet.
Traffic and fiscal, yes.
Okay, we'll get, I do want to just touch on those briefly when we get through this.
So, this first exhibit is showing, again, the original design from the May two thousand nineteen application. As Dave just noted, building A is the smaller building in the original application, closest to the West Mill here, and Sutton Pond condominiums here, and then building B is the larger building and footprint closest to High Street, in the High Street abutters, and adjacent to the wetland. As Dave noted, this original application or design included two hundred and fifty units plus a clubhouse embedded in the first floor of building B. Both buildings enclosing a central courtyard and a pool, that is a main recreational amenity for the residents. And as Dave also noted, four hundred and thirty-four total parking spaces. And while we're here on this image, I want to point out, as we did last time, the parking is about the buildings, but also included a lot behind, if you will, building B and adjacent to the wetland. The next slide, please. So, at the September seventeenth hearing, we presented to you a couple alternative options. This is the scheme after reviewing them that was favored by the board. So, this is the scheme that we have, in a moment, we'll show you some revisions to this, but just to remind you of the changes we proposed in the September seventeenth hearing, we proposed really a number of changes. The first was for building A, a shortening of the long leg of the building that created better setbacks, as Dave noted, and a wider buffer to the wetland. Elimination of that parking lot behind building B. And then probably most importantly, the change was the elimination or the reduction of the five-story leg of the building closest to the High Street neighbors, and the replacement of that five-story wing with a one-story detached clubhouse. The adjustments, again, is a reduction from two hundred and fifty units to two hundred, and again, as Dave noted, four hundred and thirty-four parking spaces to just about three hundred and fifty. So, this scheme was well received by the board, but as Dave noted, it was suggested that we explore further reductions in the mass and height, and with, again, particular emphasis on visual impacts to the High Street neighbors. And it was a suggestion that we consider, in order to accomplish that, some shifting of the program from building B over to building A. But we were cautioned to be careful not to increase impacts onto Sutton Pond. So, moving on to what we're proposing today in our current application, this is a scheme that still includes our proposal from September, that is a one-story detached clubhouse, but it proposes additional changes to the massing in response to your suggestion. And as Dave noted, what we're looking at is a stepping down of the ends, both ends of both buildings. So, what we're showing here at building A is if we kinda start off at the end closest to Sutton Pond, you can see an adjustment in the footprint of the building to match the end that we had proposed in September for building B, but then a stepping down of the building to four stories at that end closest to the Sutton Pond condominium. So, again, we think in keeping with the height of Sutton Pond, that is also four and five-story, four and five-story building. On the opposite end of building A, here, we're also proposing a similar reduction in the height from five, transitioning down to four. We have, in various sectional studies, showed that the building, that is not necessarily really required to transition, we don't think, to the scale of West Mill, which is actually taller than building A. But this is the end of the building that does present a face towards the High Street neighborhood. Even though it's about a hundred and thirty feet away, that setback, we think it's proper to go ahead and make that transition to four stories at that end as well. Here is where we started, focusing again, the elimination of the five-story wing and the replacement with the one-story clubhouse. But now, again, with this new proposal, a further stepping down at that end to four stories, closest to the clubhouse, and again, closest to the High Street neighborhood. And then finally, even on the opposite end here of building B, we're proposing a similar stepping or transition in the building. There, to Pearlie Road, which is over here, we don't think it's necessary really to, for, kind of, you know, mitigate visual impacts to that street, because that setback is, you know, in excess of two hundred and fifty feet. But as I'll show you in the next exhibit, just kinda from an architectural standpoint, we think it's proper to step these ends and have a similar transition at, kind of, bracketing, if you will, at each end of the building.
For a second, I think. Okay, and then, and then come back down? Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
And finally, the last kind of computer model that we have here, kind of takes away that that screen, colored screen, that has more diagram, and shows the actual proposed architecture. And we think it's a design, you know, that really benefits from all the input and feedback that we've received over these, over these many months, and design that is fitting or fits well into the context of the neighborhood, from all exposures, in fact. And as this slide starts to show too, we're excited about this adjustment in the massing, not only because, again, it's fitting, we think, to the neighborhood in a scale and height and massing, but it informs a more interesting architecture as well. So, as we've shown at prior hearings, we still are proposing the same approach to the architecture, and that is a masonry or brick end that is informed by the mills, informed by the brick cladding on Sutton Pond. But now with this adjustment in massing, it coincides, if you will, with the massing that we're proposing in the step back in the scale and transition, and that's a kinda solid brick ends with punched openings, and then a more residential texture in between those bookends, if you will, of masonry. And then, you know, this change, we think, in height, also will lend itself to a more interesting architecture. So, instead of a consistent five-story roof line, there's quite a bit of variation here that we think will lend itself to a more interesting and better architectural design. So, you know, transition from a one-story clubhouse now to four stories and five stories towards the center of each of the buildings.
Give me the script, I know this isn't, like, there are the, we got the plan, like, how traffic would work within this, and the subdivision road, and where people would enter, exit.
Is it all right if we wait for Brian to come, he has two images that show site plans, straight site plans, that we can talk through the
Sure.
flow of the traffic and the curb cuts?
Okay, great, yep.
So, I just have one final slide, please. So, this last exhibit on the architectural design kind of highlights the change, again, in the top is a site section through the original design. So, this is, you can see in the sectional line, we're cutting over from Sutton Pond through the north end of building A, and then through the south end of building B, and then through the homes along High Street. So, kinda working from left to right in the section, in our original application, again, we proposed five stories closest to Sutton Pond in building A. Here, we're cutting through the proposed parking lot and the pool courtyard. And then, building B, again, five stories in the original application, setback fifty feet from the High Street property line, fifteen feet in excess of what's required by zoning, but a five-story building adjacent to the rear yard of the High Street homes. And then you can see the scale relationship to those existing homes on High Street. And then below, we think a section that is more appropriate in scale to the neighborhood, as I've noted. So, working again from left to right, closest to Sutton Pond, you can see these kind of ends, shouldered ends, reduced height ends, so in this case, four stories, closest to Sutton Pond. The section through the parking and pool courtyard is similar in shape, but now, in place of the five-story leg at this particular section cut, we have the one-story clubhouse, which you can see in elevation is considerably lower than the than the existing homes that abuts on High Street. So, overall, we think it's a design that, as I noted, has really benefited from all the input, and we think fitting for the neighborhood, we appreciate the feedback.
Okay. So, so, we did get a fiscal impact, we got a traffic impact. My review of it, and feel free to comment, seems like it's a little bit less than what it was before?
I think the general takeaway is that we reduced, the use is the same, and it's just twenty percent smaller, and therefore, directionally, the impacts are the same, but just at twenty percent less, about twenty percent less in both traffic and in fiscal. But the fiscal impact's still highly positive for the town, and the traffic, you know, based on the at two hundred and fifty units, our traffic engineer stated that he thought the road network was sufficient to handle the traffic. I think, you know, it's even less so now. We got the peer review for traffic, I think we still are gonna do the peer review for fiscal, and we'll respond to those comments and go through.
Great.
So, that, if I could call Brian up to talk through the site plan, and the parking, and the curb cuts, and how that all is gonna work?
That would be great.
Uh, excuse me, good evening, I'm Brian Huntley with Ty &amp; Bond again, if you could scroll down a little bit further on the presentation slide, please. So, what I wanna show basically is this is what the original site layout was, that we presented at back in May, June, when we first started the project, and I wanted to put it up here just to show a little contrast in what we're proposing now. So, you know, this is what we talked about, this is what we got all the feedback on, and Monica, if you could scroll a little bit further down, you can see where we are today. So, essentially, in a nutshell, and I wanna run through to make sure I don't miss any of the points, but we've backed the site away, so there are no direct wetland impacts at all. You know, in our meetings with the Conservation Commission, it was pretty clear that they not only didn't like the idea of moving the site around to have wetland impacts, but they also weren't on the table with agreeing to any waivers from their setback requirements. So, this project, as it's redesigned currently, complies with the locals' wetland bylaws, so we're not having any direct wetland impacts. And as far as the twenty-five-foot, fifty-foot buffer zones, we're meeting what the requirements are in North Andover for activities that can occur within those areas. We are in the process of going back to the Conservation Commission with an updated notice of intent that, you know, will be done concurrently, essentially, with the process here with you folks as well. As you can also see, there is additional fire access that's shown, that will get to the rear of the building as well, which is a little bit more robust than it was in the previous layout, with a turnaround and a hammerhead, we've had some meetings with emergency response to be sure that we're meeting what their requirements are, so that is an improvement over the previous set of drawings. One of the most notable changes probably is the realignment of the subdivision access road, which was done after multiple meetings with the DPW and the town engineer, where we've shown an alignment where the subdivision road aligns with the East Mill entrance, which from a traffic point of view is a higher traffic use than the Prescott Street intersection. And based on site distances and the way the topography and the curves are on High Street, that was determined to be a more safe place for that intersection to come out onto High Street. Along with that is, we moved the first curb cut that's entering into the parking areas for this project further away from High Street, so that provides more distance for queuing and turning going into the parking lot. It aligns a little bit more with what the plan is for the shared parking, excuse me, for that lot out front in the parking lot that's closest to High Street. Sure.
Why don't you take us if you're entering from High Street?
Sure, entering from High Street, this is the subdivision road here, and previously, when you came in the subdivision road, there was a turn and a curb cut into the parking lot that was much closer to High Street. We moved that curb cut further away from High Street back here. The main curb cut from the subdivision road to Avalon Bay is right here. You can see that there is some parallel parking on the subdivision road that we've proposed, and we've done our best to change the alignment here to ensure that the one-way traffic from the West Mill, as well as traffic from Sutton Pond, is handled in a safe manner with site distances that are appropriate for these entrances. This here, as I was saying, is the additional fire access that we've provided in this, excuse me, in this layout. And this being the wetland here in the back, where previously, there was a portion of it where we had some wetland fill in this area, where we've backed the geometry of the site away from that, to more closely match what's allowed in upland areas here. We've been working, again, on a lot of the infrastructure update, which includes, we've had a couple of meetings and a lot of discussions with National Grid, which there is a, currently, an overhead line that runs through, and we're in the process of getting the final design together to underground that overhead line. That's happening as part of this project as well. And, you know, our final update is that we are working on... And I, you know, a final update is that we are working on the final stormwater design for this arrangement, which will not only address the requirements of the, the local bylaws, but it will also address any of the peer review comments that came up from the original peer review with the idea that we can get that back out for an updated peer review. And if there are any further comments or questions, you know, from the peer reviewer where we will be working with them to address any concerns that they have.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the, the dimensions and the quality of the subdivision roadway?
Uh, sure. We, we actually do have a completely updated set of subdivision road plans that have been submitted and I know that that is something that has gone to the DPW for their review as well. Essentially, we're not changing any of the dimensions of the subdivision road, we're not changing the width of the road, we're not changing the width of the right-of-way, but what we've done is changed the alignment so it more closely matches the, the intersection directly across the street on the, the East Mill.
Two questions. One, where the row of screening is with the houses on High Street, is any of the, in your plan, any of the existing vegetation that's there being taken away and replaced or is it all what's there staying?
Uh, let me go to the drawing to see. The majority of the vegetation that exists certainly is, you get beyond where that fire access is drawn, is not being touched at all. So anything that's there will stay and I need to look at.
Yeah, but that's not what I asked. I asked, is anything of what's there being taken out?
Are these the ones right along the building? Those are additional?
That's correct. The, the ones with callouts are proposed and additional plantings.
The other question I had is related to the parking, that what you have here is compliant with the zoning, but I heard you say that you didn't think you needed that much. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. The zoning requires, I think, based on our unit mix, about 1.75, 1.74. I, I think we would, 1.6, 1.65 would be more than enough. I think as, for zoning compliance, we have 335-stripe spaces on-site. I think those are enough to, to serve our residents. We've also added the subdivision road spaces, which are allowed to be counted, and some spaces on High Street, parallel spaces on High Street, which are allowed to be counted as part of the compliance. So that was my point.
So is that what you've got there, sort of what you want or is it what you're required? I guess what I'm trying to do is there are, have been circumstances where what we do is if you don't think you need it, you basically keep it there and don't build and then you have the capability of building in the future. But I'm trying to get some sense of whether you could scale back the number or that is the number.
It's, I, I think it's close. I could take a look at it and get back to you and see if there's a parking demand analysis because the first hundred spaces on the right-hand side are going to be shared during the day with the West Mill and then used by night by Avalon Bay. I think that we probably need these spaces that we have, but I think there were some concerns previously that within zoning, you're allowed to count some spaces along the roads. I think we, we are counting them for zoning compliance purposes, but I don't think we actually need them for our residents.
The zoning officer did have some questions about that.
Yes, about, you know, more, more details as to where the spaces are located and the sizes and things of that nature. So that's still an open item. That's not something that he was quite comfortable with at this time.
Right, no, I think it's an open, I, I guess what I'm trying to do is I'm, I'm trying to look at from the perspective of overall impact and parking has obviously an impact more spread of parking that there is more of an impact it's going to have. So I was just trying to see where the level of flexibility was.
Okay. Any more?
Those are all our formal questions, our formal presentation for tonight. I think that in following up, based on what we've done previously through the summer and what we've done now with the update, I, I would say the two areas that we need to probably have further submissions to the board are stormwater, which Brian mentioned, peer review responses. And I think we would be issuing a further developed landscape plan, which has a few more, a few more.
Can you go back to your five items?
Sure.
That you started off as long as we hit all, we hit all of them. Because I think there's only we missed.
Okay. So, the, when we go through them again?
Yes, please.
So the first was further changes to the massing, which I think we talked about in the four and five stories. A revised fiscal impact study, which we submitted. A revised traffic memo, including a discussion on a Walker Road connection.
Yeah, can you talk about that?
Sure. The memo was in the, the pack. I think that, and I'm not a traffic engineer, so I might defer to Brian here, I think in general, the traffic, our traffic engineer thought that it wasn't, it wouldn't be a great, of great benefit to the traffic that's coming from ours, to mitigate traffic from our site, only because there's so few trips that are going on Prescott to 125 and to circumvent that didn't really make sense because they think most of the traffic is going to be going to 495 and the highway network. So, and the other thing is there's a legal issue related to the fact that Walker Road's a private way and we don't have any rights to actually, and the town doesn't have any rights to actually do that.
Okay.
There's a two-page memo in there that talks through the details of it.
Okay.
And if, I think that would be part of a peer, you know, updated peer review as well if there's any questions about it. Yeah.
Okay.
The fourth was revised plans with numbers and architecture, so I think we've done that. And coordinate the subdivision road with the site plan, which is now done as well.
Okay. Um, before we get to public comment, board members, do we think now is a good time to do a site visit? I mean, are you guys pretty locked in and this is what our, what you're proposing?
Yeah, we, we feel really good about the design. We think it's really responsive to the comments we've heard today.
Okay. So, I, I mean, I think at this point, I think we're, I think we have the layout of the road, we have the proposed layout of the road, we have the proposed layout and heights, varying heights of the buildings. I think now is time? Yes?
The corners of the building and the roadway and pertinent features should all be staked.
And did we want balloon testing at the same time? Yes, okay.
So I have a question about the balloon testing.
Yes, that's what we're talking.
We've never done it before.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's an, and we've gone and asked through the world of permitting folks that we're associated with and what we heard was essentially you buy some balloons and you measure the string out and just lift it up. I'm concerned that it's not going to be as effective as, as we had hoped, but.
So I would talk to, can you give them, give them? Yeah. So you, do you see the Verizon guys that were in here before?
Yeah. And I, and it's, and I understand that it's typical when you're putting up a
Right.
250-foot tall cell tower.
Right. To just, I, I would, I mean, we may be able to even give them, you guys, some feedback about who to talk to, but I would talk with one of them. Basically, we want to be able to, there are two things we want to be able to do. We want to be able to, you know, you put the balloons up and they're up there for six hours so that beer, you know, people can walk by the site and say, hey, look, I'm looking at the site, what do I see, what don't I see? And then also be able to take photographs and put them in with a simu, with these kind of 3D simulations so you can see what it would look like from different places, right? Right? So for in different people's yards and you put a balloon up, you know, where are we going to see it, where are we not going to see it? That kind of thing.
What I would suggest is to have that done for the, the site visit, but I've also kind of mentioned to the applicant, there's been other projects that I've, that I've worked on where they've made use of computer simulations from all different directions to give you a better idea of what the massing actually feels like from, so you could do a massing from High Street and also from Sutton Street and just the different areas so you can actually get a sense of what it, what it feels like.
Right. So like where the top of your buildings are going to be, you want to balloon up that high at that location so that we can see, okay, 50 feet up from, 55 feet up, whatever is from, you know, in the middle of this building. If we're sitting in someone's porch on High Street, if we're sitting in Sutton Pond, what's it, what are we actually going to see? Or is it blocked by trees? Is it not blocked by trees? Is it blocked by buildings? Is it not blocked by buildings? We want to get a sense. It's not perfect, but it at least gives us a sense.
Since we're not doing just balloon tests for a single-point tower.
Right.
Should we talk about where it might be helpful to have the balloons?
Yeah.
Typically, corners of the buildings.
Corners of each buildings?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
The four-story or five-story?
Both. Oh, well, let's, I would, five-story, right?
Because the edges are four.
Right. Um, so, I would think edges and then, so like, let's, one, right, one in the middle. I mean, really, I definitely want you to hit your highest point. I mean, hit your highest point, hit the edges on each building, right? Hit the highest point in the middle and the edges of each building. I think that's.
I think we need to have the points that are closest to the residents and to Sutton Pond, right? The problem is, is it at the four-story level or the five? Because the five is not closest.
And I'm not sure that the closest is going to be what's most impactful too, depending on the distance. I don't know. Right?
I think, you know, residents on High Street would probably want to see what a balloon looks like on the edge of the building closest to them. But is it at the four or the five?
Yeah. What I would say is since, I mean, this is a more complicated design than, you know, the other projects I worked on. You kind of, I would say, you're just going to have a whole bunch of balloons in the air, ones that should reflect both the four-story and, and five-story.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm thinking one, two, three, one, two, three, four, something like that. Yeah, I don't know. This is new for us too. I don't know.
Yeah, of course, you have to figure it out.
What about the clubhouse?
One-story, yeah.
Somebody's standing.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially when you get above, you know, three stories, I swear the concern lies.
I don't know.
I can, I can work with them.
Yeah, why don't you guys work with planning, see what you can come up with. I mean, we're, this is new for us too. Usually it's a cell tower and it's just one balloon straight up in the air, so.
Would photos be more useful?
They may be. They may be.
Yeah, I think it's a combination of both.
Yeah, I just want to.
I think Monica, you're right. I think doing that, because I thought that.
From my, from my, from my experience, the photo simulations were very, very useful. I mean, just think about 505 Sutton when you saw that. I've seen, and I've provided the applicant with examples from another project from a different town so they could see what it looks like and I can send that again. Because you could see, the way that they did it, you could really see it from a human perspective and they took it from various levels. And to be honest with you, when I, that project is almost completed and it looks just like the photo simulations.
So the balloon test may not be the best, but let's at least try it.
But it helps. People need these different ways.
Balloons and photos and do both.
Yeah, and we'll just see what, we'll take it for whatever it winds up being, okay?
Different, different people interpret things differently.
Right, so we, and we appreciate that. Okay. Um, how much time do you need to do that?
Uh, I will need to talk to a surveyor, see how quickly we can get a surveyor out there to stake everything and stake the entrances and so on, but I would hope to be able to do it. I don't know if we could do it for the next meeting, which is what, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
It's the 26th, so do you want, we can, if we can, it would be nice to do it before that. If not, we could, when's the meeting, just could do anything Thanksgiving week is not going to work.
Try to get somebody else out there. Um, well, what day would work for the board? Maybe we can set a ten, a tentative date and then I can communicate through Monica to see if.
Meeting day. Yeah.
No, it's going to be tough for people to get that.
It's dark.
And it's dark.
Because now you're getting sunset, you know, four o'clock. So I don't know if you want to do it on a Saturday?
We only have one Saturday.
Saturday, well, Saturday the 23rd. The next meeting's not till the 26th.
Yeah.
Saturday the 23rd, would that be possible?
Uh, I will find out. Let's, I would say let's schedule it and I'll talk to the surveyor.
They're not, I don't think they're going to be able to do it.
They can also leave them up too. So it does, how many people won't be available then? If most of you won't be then.
I can do the 24th.
Or the 24th.
I can do the 24th.
24th?
Yep.
I mean, or, this for the site walk for the balloons.
It's all going to be together.
They're all, they should be staked and then the balloon should be up too.
Sunday the 24th, what time? Okay. 12 o'clock? Sunday the 24th at 12 o'clock? I, I, I said 12, not one.
You can watch the scores on your phone.
I said 12. All right, Sunday, Sunday the 24th at 12.
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay.
Sunday, November 24th at noon.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be tentative. If it doesn't work, then let us know.
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Um, all right, so let's, um.
Not to 4:25.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Gene. Football game is on.
You can watch a phone, a game on your phone.
4:25.
And block.
Not his phone. Okay, great. Um, okay, anything else that you guys want to add tonight?
No, I think, well, the only thing I, I would like to, so we're going to have the site walk. Are there any other remaining questions that the board has that we need to develop documents to provide answers for? I think we've gotten everything, but just wanted to ask one last time to make sure.
I'd be curious about the school impacts again.
Sure. Okay. It's, it's, it's included in the fiscal, the updated fiscal impact. We went from 44 school-aged children projected to 36.
Okay, sorry.
And what I'll do is part of the program, it all gets recirculated, so.
Yeah, yeah. All this information's fresh, just got submitted last week, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, I want to point out the definitive subdivision. They didn't submit anything for this meeting, but it, I, you know, I don't know if you want to transition to that, so they're not on the agenda, but if, I, you guys want to ask for a continuing.
We're planning on continuing until the 26th.
Good, great.
Because you guys are not doing meeting on the 19th.
Right. And we have a December date on that, right?
Yes.
Okay, great.
17.
Okay. I don't have anything, I mean, we're still waiting on some peer reviews of what's just been submitted, but.
Yes.
You generally know where you're, what you're going for at this point. Okay. So, why don't we take additional public comment if there is any? Um, yeah, great.
Hi, I'm Betsy Coe, 1116 High Street. Three questions. Number one, High Street's all full of dimples and things. My house is starting to fall apart from the trucks already. If there's any damage to my house due to construction, do I get reimbursed from anybody? Number two, could I weave a fence in so that people from the apartments can't come into my backyard and vice versa? And number three, you're saying there's going to be a road back there for the fire? I just want that clarified. Is that going to be a paved road?
Uh, we need to speak to the fire department about the details of it. We could do some sort of pervious paver. We don't plan to use it for parking or anything. It really is just for emergency vehicle access. So if we could do a grass paver, if they would support that, we would be open to it.
That's what I'd rather have.
Okay.
So we leave, we generally leave that up to the fire department with whatever is going to be discussed.
But I'm just, my main concern is right now, when you're driving down High Street, come for your site review, someone get a big truck. You'll see the house is shake now because we're all divots and the houses are breaking and things are falling off the walls as it is. And if you're going to be digging behind my house, I'm afraid what's going to happen. The house is almost 200 years old. This was, stood everything, I hope it withstands it now. And also I'm afraid of pollution too because DNF, who knows what they put in the ground back then? So I don't know, does, who looks into the environmental issues? Conservation?
Well, there's not going to.
Because the ground could be contaminated. So who takes care of contamination if this, if there is in the ground?
DEP. Yeah?[1736.16] Yeah?
So we, R C G previously did environmental studies on this site, we did environmental studies on this site. There was nothing in those studies that led us to believe there's any contamination on the site, so, just wanna clarify that to everyone.
Did you do bore studies?
There were, there was, there were borings done on site, uh, as part of that, there's, they look at the, what the soil profiles look like, they also do a thing called the P I D test, which tests for volatile organic compounds, which is the most typical. Uh, environmental contamination you see in industrial sites, and we didn't have any recognized environmental conditions about that.
Did we have any peer review of those studies?
No, so you should request those studies and we can have the civil review of those.
Yeah, let's do that.
We, we, I can submit a summary memo from our environmental engineer talking about the scope of the study and, and what he found. Uh, there are some confidentiality things surrounding phase one environmental reports and twenty one es in general that, um, I don't know if I can release the entire report frankly, but we can issue some details about what they studied and what they found.
The more you can release, the better.
Okay.
Can you just help me understand what, what do you mean by, what would be, I mean, what, what are the confidentiality issues that limit what you can release?
Um. There could be details associated with it that are, you know, a property owner would. Would want to, uh, deal with with their environmental engineer, there's none that I know of, but I would need to talk to others to confirm that I, what I could release and what I can't release. I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know what I can release and what I can't, but I'll release as much as I can. If there's follow-up questions, we can certainly talk about them. I can bring my environmental engineer to talk to you as well.
That would be great. That, yeah, I think that would be the best thing, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Um, one of my questions tonight is gonna be about this.
I'm sorry, can you, hold on, can you tell us who you are?
Oh, Barbara, sir, Sutton Pond, again.
Thank you.
Um, one of my questions was the site visit, so I'm really happy to hear we're gonna do that. Um, but I want. To, um, make sure that. Um, you know, we're doing corners, but the corners are lower than the.
Yeah.
So we have to do at least five stories.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of what I heard tonight with these drawings and everything was, you know, everything that was done to High Street side. Um, like the buildings have slightly moved and all that. Um, I wanted to know what the footage is from the, uh, High Street neighborhood to the building and what the footage is from Sutton Pond to Building A.
The, uh, for, the distance for the buildings?
From, to our, from like our property line to the start of the building.
I don't know if I have that, right?
That was something that we have to do and provide that, so you should have that for the next meeting.
Sure.
Because I heard that on the Sutton Pond side, it's only fifteen feet from our fence, so.
No, I think it's fifty, I, well, I'm not sure, I think it's gotta be at least fifty.
It, it's not required to be fifty, it's, um. We'll, we'll get back to you on it, but.
The R one, so the residential.
It's not a residential zone.
Gotcha, right, 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 right. Okay, they'll find that out, if we could have that, uh, for the next meeting, so at the site visit, we can't. Well, that might, the distances we might be able to go over, but.
Yeah, we'll see the corners.
Yeah. We'll be able to see that. Cause they'll, they'll stake the corners of the building, so we'll be able to see.
Right.
The distance.
Yeah, and, um. I did put this in an, an email to the board, but, um, at one of the meetings, you did ask that they, um, make the building smaller. And I think you said a number, but they didn't have to stick with that. But, to me, keeping it at five stories and only taking out fifty units is not making it smaller. I mean, and you're gonna see, when you see the site visit, what this is gonna do to. The abutters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sheila Pendleton, I live on Irving Road. I've been in this neighborhood about thirty-five years, and I walk to town just all the time, I love to walk around to downtown or to the library, and I cut through. The small road that goes over the tiny bridge. You know, I cut through there a lot, I go up, I'm always walking around here, and I just don't think that these buildings or this pool. Are adding anything to this neighborhood, I think. You have historic mills and you have Sutton Mill, which is a nice old building, and suddenly you're putting up this huge apartment complex. And I think the pool, I just can't imagine walking down here in the summer, there's gonna be fifty people in a pool and is there gonna be music at night and, or like people. You know, what kind of activities they're gonna have at this clubhouse? It just seems like. We've been trying to make this neighborhood, you know, some of this residential and, I mean, some of the commercial buildings that have gone in here now that the big. You know, the big employers have left, and there's a lot of restaurants and little things. And we've tried to have downtown, you know, have people walk from downtown to the, um, orders and markets and things like that. And, and, um, so, so this. So the mills here, it's almost an extension of the center of North Andover, you know, the stores there and then there's restaurants and stores in this neighborhood. And I just feel like, I mean, this is, this could be a lovely place to live, but it's plunked down in the middle of our town. Our downtown, our historical neighborhood, you know, that, it just doesn't, it's so out of place. I just can't, I can't imagine it here, you know, I, I think some housing here would be good, but even two hundred units and a pool. It just doesn't seem. You know, in keeping with the historic nature of the downtown. So I've just. You know, I just don't think any of these modifications make it appealing. I don't think it adds anything to the mill area or, you know, to the people who live in the residential area. So, um, so I just, I don't know what the historical commission has had to say about it or anything, but I, um. No, I just think you should look at the whole, the overall picture of the town. And, um, you know, this might, you know, this might be good out on the highway, we already have a big development out on one twenty-five, but I don't think it belongs here. Thank you.
Uh, Tim Syret, West Broad Street Road. Um, I'd like to go back to Walker Street for a minute. Uh. I'd like to start off by saying, I really don't think that it's, that it's on Avalon to, to, to try and make Walker Street happen, I, I kinda think it's on us as a town. Um, perhaps with the cooperation of, of R C G, I think that they would get great benefit, uh, from, from the East Mill. Um, having said that, I thought that their analysis on Walker Street was really limited. Um, to simply say, hey, we're just gonna take the A cars that go on Prescott Street and we're gonna move them over to Walker Street, it's not a big deal, uh, therefore it's kind of inconsequential. Um, I think it's, it could potentially be very consequential, and I don't want us to lose sight of it. Um, just because it's not necessarily related specifically to this development, you know, I'm thinking about. Amazon, I'm thinking about East Mill, I'm thinking about Knights of Columbus, I'm thinking about High Street, okay? You know, I, I appreciate what Mr. Gillespie said earlier. That his traffic engineer tells him that we can handle this. High Street cannot handle this. We have in High Street. I'm gonna call it Upper High Street and Lower High Street, okay? Lower High Street is the bit where the mills are, that goes from. Water Street to Prescott, and then Upper High Street is where the residences are, that goes from Prescott to Sutton. Today. When I drive down Upper High Street, four times, Tuesday, Thursday, twice Saturday mornings. If there's a car coming in the other direction, I have to pull over and let them pass. It is practically a single lane, because what's happening is that, first of all, I believe it is more narrow when you get up to the Upper High Street thing. But even if it's not, we have these. Sidewalks that aren't really good with curb cuts. And people park there because they live there. And with those parked cars, we're now at an even more narrow place. And we have children on tricycles there. And. You cannot pass, you cannot pass. And when the snow comes. Okay? So, I'm really, really concerned about High Street and Upper High Street. Lower High Street, you go there in the morning, they've got all the vans that are supplying all the restaurants and such, I don't know what kinda parking you think you're gonna get out of that place. So, I think Walker Street, and I also think going down to Sutton Street, could be really, really important to us, all of us. And, when I think about what it could do, much more so than simply the eight cars that are coming off of Prescott. All the cars that are coming out of this area, ultimately, in my view, they're going through three different places. The first is kind of to the southwest, which is basically Sutton Street over to four ninety-five, points south, or points west if you're gonna get over the river. The second is to the north, you get up to Sutton, to one twenty-five, into Haverhill, onto the highway. And then the third is on the other side of one twenty-five, where you're now going to the southeast. You're going into the Out Country, you're going to Boxford, you're going down one fourteen to Middleton, or you're going into Andover. Those two points at one twenty-five, every single car that goes through there could go through Walker Street. Okay, that could be, depending upon what I read in here. Anywhere from thirty-three percent of all the cars to forty-seven percent of all the cars that are coming out of this development, and it's gonna be, of course, this one plus East Mill. So let's not, eh, eh, let's not dismiss the idea. Um. Uh, I, I don't think it, it necessarily has to be done in conjunction with this, uh, but I think it's something we have to keep in the, in the back of our heads. Um, I'd like to talk about the parking spaces. Uh, three hundred and fifty parking spaces, a hundred of them are gonna go to workers in the West Mill during the day. So, David, how does that happen? I mean. I've driven, I've driven down there, you know, between seven thirty and eight fifteen in the morning to take a look at these hundred cars, and there are about a hundred cars that park there. They're there by about eight fifteen. So are we assuming that a hundred people. Leave Avalon by eight fifteen in the morning so that a hundred workers can come in and take their parking space?
For a minute. Yeah, the, the, the plan is, and I think the zoning encourages, to shared, shared parking uses, there's excess parking at the East Mill, these spaces are not needed for the zoning compliance of the West Mill, it's a convenience. For R C G and part of our project with them, so the plan would be that from eight to six, they would be reserved for office workers and from six P M till eight A M, they would be reserved for Avalon B.
Okay, so a hundred people are leaving Avalon by eight in the morning?
Assuming that there's a hundred people that park in those spaces overnight, yes.
So what is the zoning requirement?
One at it, one at a time. A zoning requirement, is it, what is it, one point seven five, one point five?
So I saw a table, and I don't even know, it might be this table. Where it breaks it out by, uh, apartment size, right? So for, uh, a studio.
Yeah, that's it.
You have, you have like one point one, and for one bedroom, you have like one point two, there it is, and it's three forty-seven point two five, right? Is that a zoning requirement?
That's the zoning.
Okay.
I, I, I guess my question is, is your hypothesis that it's gonna be overcrowding in the parking?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, because one of the things that, uh, that we've experienced as a board is that what is required for parking usually is more than what ends up being needed. So in other words, you, you overbuild parking, and that is, I think, a phenomenon that I've read a number of articles in the Globe and elsewhere, where a lot of buildings have come to that same conclusion. That they built too much parking for basically people's current lifestyles, so. I appreciate the fact you're concerned about that, we should look at that and understand that, but I don't know necessarily whether that is true, I think we definitely, yes, we should look at it. Uh, I'm not quite sure how you empirically prove it one way or the other, uh, but I, I'm not completely sold that there's gonna be a parking problem here.
So it's, it's something that we need to be very, uh, confident about, because if there is a parking problem, the cars are gonna end up on High Street.
That's fair, that's, that's a very fair comment.
So, if we have three hundred and forty-seven point two five spaces, and we're giving a hundred of them to the workers, isn't that two hundred and forty-seven spaces? Okay, does this, does this meet the requirement if, if for half the day?
You can share, you can share, I mean.
Okay, you can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. So site trip generation. Um. You know, a lot of the data that the engineers use comes from this place called I T T. And, uh, it's national data, and, uh, the, the engineer. Mister Kalakiri. Um, would go to I T E and, uh, and get this data, it's national data, right, it's not local, okay? And even I T E and everyone that uses it says, if you can use local data, you should. So, what that tells me is that any sort of trip generation that gets created by this data, we have to kinda take it with a grain of salt. It, it could be quite different, because what's baked into any number that this analyst is gonna use is going to be an experience from downtown Chicago or Wyoming or, or wherever. It's, it's the industry standard, I understand that, I'm not really complaining about it, what I'm saying is that when we look at the numbers that they give us, they could come back different. They're estimates. This analyst used a land use code for this development, for what's called mid-rise, and he did the right thing. There are three different land use codes, and what you get from the land use code is what's called trips per unit per day. Okay, so, I move into the unit, I take a certain number of trips per day, going to work, going to wherever, going shopping, wherever. Your first land use code is for a low rise, which would be one to two stories high, your second would be for mid-rise, which would be three to ten, which is where we are here. And your next one would be for a high rise, which is ten and above. So, if you're in a low rise, you move in there. The point I'm trying to make is that he selected mid-rise.
Yeah.
Okay? It assumes that the people that live there walk to a lot of their needs. Okay? My point is that these people that are going to be living here are not necessarily gonna be walking to a lot of their needs, they're gonna be walking downtown. They're gonna be walking to the local establishments. But to schools to get their kids, to go to Market Basket, to go to work, they're driving. The difference between the low rise number and the mid-rise number is thirty-five percent. So any number that we get, again, we have to take it with a grain of salt, thirty-five percent could be a big difference, okay? So the point that I'm trying to make is that these are estimates, I think they're kinda squishy estimates. And I, I'm really concerned about traffic, and that's why I'm so concerned that we're dealing with squishy estimates.
Well, we are having a peer review, right, of, of that, and so we'll have our own reviewer do that. And they're all gonna be estimates based on data, and so, you know, we're gonna.
But we should understand what's behind the data, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but, I mean, we're gonna lean more on the data than we are on anecdotal evidence, that's what we do.
Okay, I'm, I'm not really presenting anecdotal evidence, you know, what I'm.
No, I mean, you're saying that you don't trust the data and that it's based on things and we should be cautious with it, fair enough, but we're gonna. Look at their data, we're gonna look at the peer review data, and that's mostly where we're gonna go on, you have presented a lot of anecdotal evidence about what's on High Street and how it is. And so, you know, we'll take all of that in consideration, but we're gonna go with the data that we have, that they presented in the data from our peer reviewer, and that's gonna be what we're gonna lean on.
I would like, I would like to ask the applicant about one particular piece of data.
Well, you can make a point and then we'll have them look at it.
The number of cars that they're assuming that come out during the morning rush is forty-seven. Okay? We just heard him say that a hundred have to leave. By eight fifteen.
No, that, that's not what he said.
Okay, well, if the parking spaces are booked.
You're right, you're assuming that all three hundred and fifty spaces are booked, and that those hundred are being used, I think what, I think what he said is that he doesn't think that they're gonna need three hundred and fifty spots, so those other two hundred spots may be used first and then. It's not necessary that those a hundred are going to be the ones that are used first, cause those are gonna be for sharing, so assuming, believe you're gonna stay past eight o'clock, then you're gonna use the other spaces first.
If the zoning regulation leads us to three hundred and forty-seven spaces.
Yeah.
Okay, there's, there's a reason for that. They, the zoning regulation seems to think that there's a need for three hundred and forty-seven cars for this space.
No, but that's.
Okay, and what he, and so the question is, if that comes true, which it may well. Okay, how many cars are leaving in the morning? Is it forty-seven or is it a hundred? Okay? That's double, between forty-seven and a hundred. Okay, and if you're giving me a statistic, and you're telling me to have faith in this statistic, and it's got a margin of error of a hundred percent. Okay, I don't have a lot of confidence in that, forty-seven people, okay, forty-seven people are getting up and getting in their car and going to. 47 people are getting up and getting in their car and going to work during morning rush hour. That's 20% of the people that live there.
That's...
That's 20% of the people that live there.
So that's one hour.
Yes.
Well...
7:15 to 8:15.
Yeah, I know that, but some people leave earlier than that.
Some people do.
Most people do.
Okay.
If you work in the city, you do.
Okay. 20%, okay? I've done this analysis on my street, I know you don't want to hear anecdotal evidence. I would ask everyone to do their analysis on their street. 71% of the people that live on my street get in their car and go to work between 7:15 and 8:15, okay? Sure, they might leave earlier, okay? 20% is very low. They call it rush hour for a reason. 20% of the people that live there, according to these statistics, are getting up and going to work between 7:15 and 8:15 in the morning. I don't believe that. I believe it's going to be more. I believe we're going to have more cars, and I don't think that we can handle it. That's all.
Anyone else? Sure?
Hi, I'm Jill Barker. I live at 181 High Street. Apart from the fact that this project is totally inappropriate for the location, the historic environment, the neighborhood, I won't address that right now. I think that should have been apparent to the planning board. I would like to follow up on the traffic. I think that when you're doing a project like this, you have to use your data to make sense of it all. I also think that common sense and anecdotal, as you call it, information is totally relevant. I don't know if any of you on the board live in town, downtown area. I don't know if any of you live in the High Street area or adjacent streets, but I do. The traffic is pretty constant. It's incredibly noisy because the road is so, in such poor condition. That's another topic. I don't, absolutely cannot fathom having this big a project with this many people moving in, who are all going to have vehicles, maybe more than one, I don't know, trying to use this one street, which is basically what they're going to be using. It just seems totally irresponsible, I'm sorry. I don't understand why it's gotten this far, based on even just the traffic alone, never mind the fact that this really wasn't of an appropriate use of space. I think it's a perfect location to put some project in there. This was not, it's not advisable to put this huge a project of new residents into this location. I don't know why it wasn't considered for senior housing, or something that might have been much more applicable use, but that's all I have to say. I think it'd be great if any of you could get down to High Street and the rush hour would be great, but any other time of the day, and stay there for a while and see for yourselves. Thank you very much.
Robin Morgeson, 147 High Street. I think I've been to just about every one of these meetings now. It's just such a fun way to spend a Tuesday night. So I think there were some really good points made tonight, and I want to start off by saying that, you know, while I appreciate that there's been some modifications, I would be lying if I said I wasn't disappointed. It's, you know, hundreds of people have turned out to these meetings over since the summer, and it's the same, it's the same stuff that's coming up and time and time again. It's the parking, I mean, not the parking, it's the number of cars, it's the, it's the traffic impact, it's the height of the buildings, noise, you know, just the complete change of aesthetic of the neighborhood. And so I, I would have to say that I still have the same concerns, and I'm sad about that, because I was hoping that this would be modified significantly more when we, when we would, when we were coming back. You know, I'm not going to get into the parking spaces, I had notes on it, but it's already been covered, so I'm just going to go through my notes just to see what hasn't been discussed. Getting back to the anecdotal versus the data, just one more thing on that. One of the meetings where the traffic report was given, there was some, there was a timestamp. It was sort of like the, the average number of seconds that you'd wait to pull out. And so that kind of stayed in my mind, and I've had that in my mind almost every morning when I pull out of my driveway to go to work, and it's never that number of seconds on High Street. It's always way more. You know, I can sit there at the end of my driveway for over a minute, waiting for cars to go by during rush hour, and I leave any time between, it varies, but 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. And again, going up that higher part of High Street where the cafe is and the restaurants, it is a bit of a, an obstacle course on a good day. So I think that is some of concern. It's, it's, this is still a massive development in what is primarily a residential neighborhood. A couple of things that haven't been talked about. One is, I have a question about the roofs of the two buildings, and whether there is any plan to put anything on top of those roofs, or the big HVAC antennas. I don't know how that is reflected in plans, but I often see that on the top of buildings, so is that taken into consideration in terms of height? And...
That's a good question.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Actual point.
Yes, all right. All right, all right. And also, I was curious about, there was, there was a diagram up about the tree level and where Building A and Building B at their highest points compared to the tallest tree level. And it looked like, of course, I'm looking at Building B because I'm on High Street, so if, if it looked like the tallest part, the five stories of Building B, was just about at the same level as the tallest trees. And so, of course, I'm thinking, well, how many of them are the tallest trees, and how many of them are the shortest trees? Do we even know that? I mean, you know, it's, that's such a weird measurement.
Yeah, I mean, I... To be honest, I don't put too much stock in that one.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the point of that was that there's some elevation involved, and that when we're looking just at raw heights, you sometimes lose a little bit of the meaning of that when High Street is kind of on a hill, and this parcel is kind of on a hill.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's just the point of it, is that when looking at just raw heights of how tall things are, we should also be cognizant of the topography.
Right.
But it's, that's why we go on the site visit, because just seeing that, that there's a slope...
Yeah.
Doesn't really answer many questions.
Yeah.
Just the same as having a 50 versus 40 versus 45.
Yeah.
That's why we go out, so...
Yeah, I keep looking at the diagram, and I keep struggling with it. And of course, in the wintertime, when the leaves are off the trees, all bets are off, right? So that's not really a very helpful...
One of the things, when we were talking about the simulations, that helps understand that a little bit better. I mean, you're zoning owner, and one of the core things that we have to look at is the mapping of the buildings related to the neighborhood at all times of year.
Yep.
And we found on a prior project, it helps, it doesn't, you know, resolve everything.
Yeah.
That's why we want to have a site work, we want the balloon test, but we also want the simulation.
Right, right, okay. I, I did hear something about, I'm going back to parking for one second, there was some mention of using, counting some of the spaces that were in the total were parallel parking spots on High Street, and I was trying to figure out how that works, because at any given time of day, all those spots are completely taken up on High Street with the businesses. Is that part of it?
The way that works is that it's just for zoning calculations. For how many spots you need to have, you can, the zoning laws allow you to count different spots towards your total. It doesn't matter if they're always used or never used, the fact that they're there...
I see, that they exist.
That they exist means you can use them towards the number that is required for you to have. It's really just a kind of a calculus.
Can I make one comment on that?
Yeah.
On the parallel spaces on High Street? We have, we have a graphic that's, that's in the packet, but I don't, we don't have to call it up now, if it's, if it's available, we can, but there's a 200-foot radius, and it includes a lot of spaces on Pearly Road and on the upper portion of High, I don't know which, the one that, the part of High Street that goes towards Sutton Street. We're not including any of those spaces in our calculation. This plan showed five spaces on High Street we were counting. We went out and physically did a survey this week, it's actually 11 spaces, and the spaces that we counted are between the dent, are all along the East Mill side of the Mills, and it's from the Dentist Building, so the East Mill curb cut going back towards Jamie's. So those are the spaces that we counted. Even though we could, under zoning, I think, count a lot of spaces in the residential section of...
100 feet?
100 feet? I think it's 200 feet in the zoning.
100 yards.
100 yards?
Yeah, yards.
100 yards?
300.
Sorry, I misspoke on that. All right, 300 feet. So it's the 11 spaces on East Mill between the Dentist Building and Jamie's, let's call it roughly. It's not any spaces on any of the residential streets, so I wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
One last point, and that is that I think there are people here, residents here, who are also looking at this in, in addition to the development discussed across the street, and the additional units, and the additional cars, and the additional, additional, additional. And so there is a point where, you know, where we could lose our minds, thinking about the potential, when you combine everything, of the massive impact on our neighborhood. Just wanted to call attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, my name's Nancy Riley, I live at Sutton Pond, and I just had a question on this map on the access road. It looks, are those parking spaces that are along the road?
Yes, there are 11 parallel parking spaces along that road.
The access road?
Or 10, excuse me, sorry, 10.
The access road coming in?
The subdivision road, yep.
But you're leaving it the same width? I thought I heard you say that you were leaving it the same width.
Brian, it's just different.
Is that correct?
Different geometry than currently exists, the pathway that comes through, Ren, do you want to just touch on that?
Yeah, I can, I'm sorry, I can talk to that. We are proposing parallel parking along the road. The actual road itself is the same width as it was before. The original proposal also had parallel parking on the subdivision road.
So, but you're leaving it the same width as it is?
So, if you, what's the paved surface width, and then what would it be if you had parallel parking on one side?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
In other words, what's, what's the paved surface of the subdivision road? How many feet wide?
We have two 12-foot, I'm sorry, 13-foot travel lanes, so the roadway itself is 26 feet wide, and then I believe we have eight-foot wide parking stalls beyond that where there's parallel parking.
Okay, so you have 26 feet excluding the parallel parking?
Correct.
Which is, that's pretty wide.
So what is it right now? How wide is the road right now without the parking?
Well, it's hard to say what the road is there. I believe where it, it is defined as a road, where it comes out as a curb cut, is approximately 24 feet. So we're proposing approximately the same, maybe a couple of feet wider, for the actual roadway itself.
So we'll have increased traffic, and then in our, essentially my driveway to get out, there'll be people parking on the side? Is that what I'm understanding? So, right now, it's a little tight getting out of that driveway, if there's someone coming in. I think my neighbors at Sutton Pond can agree with me. And the other question I had is, this week even, many days when I'm leaving, I have to wait because there's a tractor-trailer backing in to that loading, I guess it's a loading dock, you consider it? And it, it backs, it goes into the parking lot, but if you're not having an opening, I'm not sure how that's going to happen, and is that going to cause more of a traffic jam for us when we are trying to get out? Lots of times we have to wait for a truck whilst backing in, or making its way across, so I'm trying to figure out how that's...
That's a fair point.
If there's nowhere for them to turn, then they're going to be longer in the driveway, making a delay for us to leave when I'm going to work.
But that's in the mill, right? It's part of the mill.
It's part of the mill?
Yeah.
But they use, they back, they drive into the parking lot, and then back in across the driveway, and we have to wait while they do that. And if it's not going to be easy for them to do that, because it's blocked off, that's going to cause more of a traffic jam and a delay for us getting out. So I just didn't know if that's been addressed at all.
You guys can talk to RCG about, or if you have any to do with that.
I can actually address that. When we were doing the revised layout for the subdivision road and working directly with RCG, we have looked at the turning traffic, we've looked at backing and driving of trailer trucks, and the, the way the curb cuts are set up, and the curb cuts on, that go into both the parking lot and to the Avalon Bay project, there is sufficient room for a trailer truck to come into the site, back into that loading dock, and also leave. And I do believe that it will on some level block some traffic, just like it does currently, but there is plenty of room geometrically for that to happen in this arrangement. That was a consideration in the design.
What's the difference, what's the distance between the loading dock and your curb?
Yes, my name is Bob Dufal, Sutton Pond. I want to know what's the, what's the distance between the loading dock and your curb? You've got 55-foot trailers going back and into that place. It takes 40 acres to turn those trucks around, so what is the distance? How are they going, how are they going to cut the, cut the wheels, how are they going to back into the loading dock?
I don't know exactly what the distance is, but I do know that we ran the software simulation, we ran trailer trucks in there.
You ran trailer trucks with the curb there?
Okay, just let me answer.
Okay, I'm sorry, so go ahead, go ahead, answer.
We ran the software that uses trailer trucks, we showed that it can be done. That's how we came up with the radii, that's how we came up with the curb cuts on this arrangement, is to be able to get trailer trucks in there, because it's an important part of the current operation, to be able to have trucks go to that loading dock.
But I, I think it's a fair point, and I think it's your point, and it's, we've been talking before, is that if, if this tractor-trailer is blocking the road, holding rush hour, that's a problem. I mean, because we don't have that on any other street, we wouldn't tolerate it anywhere else.
Well, it's usually, the tractor-trailer trucks usually back in there. I leave for work every morning at 7:00 in the morning, there's always a tractor-trailer truck backing in there. We have buses that come in there, pick people up to go off, go off to work. And another point is, I travel for a living, okay? I work in Boston, I work in the Boston area. I leave my house at 7:00 in the morning, and whether I go 495, down Sutton Street, down High Street to Sutton Street, then jump on 495, or I go the other way to go 125, Osgood Street, to 114, by the time I get to 93 on the bypass, sometimes I'm in traffic for an hour. So you've got the people up, up on the...
But let's stay at the site.
Well, it's a site, I'm, I'm, I am, I'm getting to the site. You're going to put how many cars there? 300 cars?
Yeah.
Right? Then you're going to put, how many cars down, down on 125? That new project down on 125? So you're going to, you're going to add 600 cars. There's 197 apartments on 125. You're going to put 200 right here next to us? That's 400, that's 400 apartments. Two cars per apartment, that's 800 cars. You can have, you can have 800 cars running down High Street, 125, and Sutton Road at 8:00 in the morning? Or whether they, whether, whether you can actually have them say, okay, sir, you can't leave, go to work until 10:00? Or, sir, you can't leave, go to work at 7:00? So you're going to stagger people getting out, getting out of town to go to work? The traffic mess is going to be phenomenal. Then you're going to have, you have a light on 125, then the light on, on the top of the new fire station is. It's just, it's, it's, it's impossible to put that many cars and that many people in the small little area you've got here. Then, then you go, then you want, on the top of Sutton Street, you're going to put more apartments. I mean, I mean, how, what is the saturation point? What is the saturation point for the, for the board to say, okay, how many people, how many apartments can there actually be in one? We're looking at a four-square mile area between the 1 and 125 and here. So you're going to have 197 there, 200 here, and how many on Sutton Street? Do the math, it doesn't make sense. Thank you very much, my name is Bob Dufal.
Hi, Sugoli, 147 High Street. I just have one question. I, I walk my dogs down High Street, morning, afternoon, evening, and I'm wondering if any part of the study is, I don't know if you guys live in the area, but just kind of hanging out in the area and seeing for yourself what the traffic is like, because... Because no matter the time of day that I walk my dogs, you know, I think, I cannot imagine more traffic on this street and more residents. And I know we've been talking about traffic, but I just wanted to add that because all you had, like, I know there's these reports going on and everything, but just hanging out there, you can see, like, I just don't know how possible it's going to be to have more traffic in that area. So.
We get it, we get it. But at the same time, the zoning allows for residential housing here. Allows for multifamily residential housing here. It also allows for a whole host of other commercial activities in this spot that probably would bring more traffic. Okay, so this is not going to help the traffic. We get it. But we also can't say nobody can develop here in this town, right, in this area, because traffic stinks already. Okay, so I agree that, that we need to be cognizant, we need to be mindful of the traffic and all of the needs of the residents. We also have to be mindful of the needs of residents of North Andover, of the state and of everyone in terms of housing needs. There's a lot that goes into it and it's not just traffic. So we definitely get it, but it's, traffic is not the end-all, be-all of what we're deciding. It's a part of it and there are a lot of other parts of it that we're trying to figure out. So we've heard you all about the traffic situation, understood and it will be part of the calculus.
So, can I just follow up on that?
Yes.
I think it's important to note that there's development rights on this parcel. We can't just say no development. And that we recognize that this development will make traffic worse. With that in mind, I'd like to go back to an earlier point about the analysis on Walker Road. And I, I, I have to agree that I don't think it's a very persuasive analysis that we got from the applicant. I mean, they're really premising their analysis on, you know, it's my understanding that we're exploring Walker as an alternative to Prescott. And therefore, since Prescott is only projected to have a, this really is not worth the effort. And everything we're hearing about High Street, I, I think pushes back on the analysis done on Walker Street. That the more pressure there is on High Street, the more need will develop for other access points in and out. And I, I would really like to see a more rigorous and in-depth analysis of, of that potential option.
I'm not sure that you can, because I'm not sure that it is a potential option. So, right, because it's a private way.
But you just said you're not sure.
No, but that's the point.
That's part of the analysis.
No, but I think the point is, if you're not, you can be not comfortable with a certain amount of people and a certain amount of units and cars and just taking Walker off the board. And I would say, if, you know, it's an available option, then maybe you're more comfortable with more, with higher numbers. Or you're less comfortable. I'm not sure that we can say you have to do an analysis of this. It may be helpful, but I'm not sure it exists.
Well, I, I mean, I think if you look at the two pieces of logic of why the option didn't work is, the first one, I agree with you, Peter, that I thought that that was dismissed sort of just axiomatically and not based on any logic. But the second issue of being a private road is a bigger problem.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I think that even though we're looking at this as an individual project, individual subdivision, there are some broader public policy issues and people raised them and they're legitimate issues. I mean, we should talk to the DPW about the overall condition of High Street. I mean, if, if.
Well, their engineer even said it's not good, right?
Well, it's not good, but why is it not? I mean, I don't know, for example, I don't know how wide the right-of-way is. I don't know whether there's any unique problems with the right-of-way.
Does the width of the right-of-way change as you go up towards something someone asked about? But couldn't DPW inform that?
Well, that's what I mean.
Was that taken into account by the traffic engineer?
And, oh, by the way, that intersection there at the end is a mess and it can be fixed. It, it, it's not that hard to figure out how to fix it. You just cut off one of the accidents and you, you force everything out at the right angle and you would eliminate the, the accidents. But, but that's my point, it's that there's broader issues and I think Walker Road is one of those broader issues. I mean, I think Mr. Seibert was right, that is divorced from this project, looking at Walker Road as a public policy option is important.
Is it necessary to premise looking at Walker Road as a result of divorcing it from the project?
I think you have to because it's a private, I mean, they can't, even if they gave us numbers, they can't rely on them because you have no rights to it.
No, but that's where the public policy thing comes, is that you have a conversation with, I don't know, the kind of minimum association or whatever about making it a public way and getting, I mean, the benefit potentially that people live there is they'll get trash pickup and stuff like that that they don't get today. I don't think they get trash pickup because it's a private way, so they, maybe they would. They, they wouldn't have to pay for it, maybe that's worth it, though. I don't know.
Well, part of what's driving my concern is that if, if we were to divorce Walker Road from the project and look at it as a matter of public policy, which I, I think we're going to have to sooner or later, what, what, what part of my concern is the, the only reason we would have to do that is because of this development. And therefore, if there's a cause and effect, is there some manner by which this development could say we are causing an impact and therefore we are going to contribute to the solution in some manner? I don't know. I agree with you, the tougher part here is that it's a private road. Okay, it's a private developer. They understand that better than we do.
I think all we can do though is raise it as an issue and the applicant hears us and how much effort they put into making that happen, happens.
Right, and that means that you're only comfortable with X amount because of the traffic pattern and the layout? And that's what you're comfortable with, if you could get Walker Road or some other egress, then maybe you're comfortable with X plus Z. But I think we have to take the, what we have and what's available and if they're saying they're, they've looked at it or they haven't looked at it. I mean, I think it would be great to, I agree, I think it, if someone raises it to the Board of Selectment or with DPW or whatever, I mean, there's a whole process for accepting ways and things like that. I mean, it's bigger than this project. If they could do that, great, but I just, I'm not sure it's feasible and.
As you talk about single occupancy vehicular traffic, I do want to mention that their traffic memo has talked about the availability of public transit. Also, last year, you've also had your, the area Mayor McValley TMA come in. There are different multimodal options out there. In your, in your decision on Osgood Street, you do touch on different ways to mitigate traffic. So I, I do want to remind you that there are other options out there that are above and beyond single occupancy vehicles. And when you have a, a development of this size and of this scale, this may be an opportunity to revisit some of those options and maybe from a policy perspective, take that into account.
Well. No, well, no, I mean, I. No, what I think it means is if you have a commitment from the developer, the apartment owner, that we're going to have bike racks or do things to encourage, we're going to give discounts to people who get T-Passes or we're going to get a shuttle bus that's going to pick people up at different apartment building and bring them to you. If there's some sort of commitment to reduce, then again, you feel more comfortable with potentially more units or you feel less comfortable with more units because you don't have those things. I mean, I, there's not much we can force, but I think there are ways to feel more comfortable that they're mitigating the impacts of more people.
Have we implemented that in the past with any success?
Nope, nope, I, I mean, I, I think we've, I've said it a bunch, but nobody wants to do it because unless you're forced to do it, so.
But there's, there's tools out there, even the shop, one of the shopping centers on 114 does obligate the developer to join the TMA. You could strengthen your language that says, "and participate in the TMA." And then they could report back as to what activities they're doing. So there's numerous activities, just numerous.
Okay. Alright, that was a lot. Alright, so, can we come back on November 26th? Yes? But I'm going to get back to that, we're going to continue this hearing until November 26th. We're going to have the subdivision on for that date as well. Okay. Is there, we're also, well, I'll get to the site visit in a minute. Is there more information that you want from another party regarding any of this?
DPW, right, we talked about that?
Yeah.
The condition of High Street and why, and also the right-of-way dimension for the full length? And then be able to compare whether or not the traffic analysis takes that into account.
Also, if there's any planned, can I say recent? Improvements, thank you, that's the word, I'm sorry. Improvements toward High Street in the near future that we should know about that would impact this or other projects, that would be helpful. Okay, we're also going to schedule the site visit for November 24th. That's a Sunday at noon. For anyone who hasn't been on a site visit, there is no deliberation at a site visit, meaning we will not be discussing or having a formal discussion or taking notes about what's said, asking questions, things like that. It's really about viewing the physical nature of the site. We may ask some questions about layout and where things are, things like that nature, but we're not going to have public comment or any of those things, okay? It's really for them to show us what this all looks like. To the extent that anyone wants to allow us on your, allow us or the applicant or anyone on your property so that we can take a view from your property, we're happy to do that. Please let planning know your name, address, phone number so that we can do that without trespassing, okay? We're happy to go and do that. So it doesn't have to be tonight, tomorrow, Thursday, send them an email, talk with them, just let them know.
That was my point.
Okay. Okay, that's it for tonight. Thank you all.
You know, one of the things we looked at when we compared all of the other developments, they were all near major roadways. They had direct access. This one doesn't. What could be conditioned? I'm sure I know the answer. Why couldn't we condition it? Give us direct access to a major roadway and we'll be fine. Direct access is Walker Road.
Right, because then you're putting a condition on it, prevents them from doing it.
No, it doesn't. It's a lot of work.
What if they can't do it?
Then they have to come back to us.
I don't think you can make that condition. I think you could say.
Well, you have to, in effect, premise this development and look at all, everywhere else we've done and everywhere else included direct accesses.
I think you could say it's not comfortable with your numbers because it doesn't have a direct access?
Well, I think I will.
Which I think is, that I think you can do, but I don't think you can say, no, you can't get a special permit because you don't have a license.
A fair point, but that's how they premise their entire argument. Look at how we've done and we have a proven model, but their proven model all relies on direct accesses to major roads. And here they're saying, eh.
Only hear what our peer review says, though.
What, our what?
Our peer review. Our traffic peer, we haven't heard from them at all. And I think that's a big piece of missing information.
The other thing we have to consider is that traffic sucks now.
Yes.
And it's the difference between traffic sucks now versus traffic sucks now.
Traffic is a funny thing, what people think is insane traffic.
I, I drive on High Street, I have no problem, I think it's fine.
I mean, it's, it's kind of like.
Come drive by there at 5:30 and it'll be fine.
There's technical definitions of traffic and they don't.
I don't know, I, I guess I'm not in a hurry then to get home.
That's the anecdotal person.
Living in major cities, depending on how quickly you get to get some.
You know, you could, you know, it's kind of like, I guess if you live on High Street, one of them could be suburban and you want to have a little bit of traffic, but you know.
It's not, it doesn't exist.
And that's, but it's not like it's been like, you know, commercial dragon, like, uh, best practices or something like that. So, you know.
Yes. You good? We should, we should be done talking when we. Okay. Zero, Chickering Road, 137 Andover Street, Trustees of Reservations. Application for a site plan review, special permit under Section 195 8.11A. Three and 10.7 North Andover zoning by law. Applicant requests a special permit to allow for the repurposing of an existing 24-by-60 shed to become a visitor center, parking for 60 cars and associated landscaping. Property is located in the R3 zoning district. Hi.
Hello. Oh, I'm sorry, before I get to it, I need to recoup myself because I'm a, I'm a butter.
No, you're not allowed, you must have. Thank you, Carla.
You don't have to leave, though.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Go take notes about all the things you're saying, get back in the room.
Good evening to the board. My name is Elizabeth Curie-Sowell. I'm a project manager with the trustees. I have tonight with me Kathy McDonald, the director of Stevens Coolidge Place, as well as two of our consultants, Deb Colbert, civil engineer with Hancock Associates, and also Scott Thornton, traffic engineer with Van Ness Associates. So there's a couple of points that I wanted to address with the board before I hand off the mic to Deb to talk about our stormwater management piece, which is the most significant change since our meeting on September 17th. The first is, I was asked to address concerns that were raised at our September 17th public hearing. Those issues were summarized as the stormwater management component of the project, the location of the visitor center, as well as the general scale of the project regarding how we manage our events. So I put together a letter and Kathy put together a letter as well that we submitted in this package. I'm happy to go over the contents of those letters now or to address questions that the board may have about those letters. I'm not sure how you would like me to address that now.
I mean, I, I had a chance to read them, I think they were pretty succinct. But why don't you talk a little bit about, so you're going to talk about stormwater, right?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so we'll, we'll hold off on that. Tell us a little bit about the visitor centers, are you, why it's located where it is now, what changes you've made over time to where that is? And I, I know I had questions about why it's, do we really need to make it that close to that other building with the bathroom situation? And then, if you could just tell a little bit about how the scope of events at Stevens Coolidge, and I don't remember where Kathy can, has changed over the last couple of years? How you anticipated changing and why you think that's good or bad? Because I mean, I think we're getting, I, yeah, why, why is it changing that way? What are, what do you, why are you having it change that way? So, yeah. I'm going to stop talking now.
Sure, sure. So I'm happy to go over the contents of, of those letters. Monica, do you mind bringing up that graphic I sent of the visitor center? It'd be a little easier to speak to. So I'm going to start by addressing your first question, the location of the visitor center.
Right.
So in my letter, I review sort of the, the evolution of the location of the visitor center. And then I end that letter with some sort of refined, more regulatory logistical reasons about why it landed in the final location. So I'm going to just talk a little bit about the evolution. The location of both the proposed 60-car parking lot as well as the visitor center have evolved over time in response to both existing site conditions as well as concerns that we've heard from our abutters. Once this Chickering Road curb cut was established, both the parking lot and the visitor center were located logistically in relation to that curb cut. So we knew that we wanted to have a parking lot use the existing tree line as much as possible to visually shade it from our, our neighbors as well as to keep the parking lot within the property as much as possible and away from our property lines. The general location of the visitor center is really determined because of the location of the parking lot as well as the actual destination of the visitors to the Stevens Coolidge Place property. So the visitor center truly is a physical connection between the first stop, the parking lot, and the final destination, the public garden historic house component. So this red line represents really the ideal. So this red line represents really the ideal location for that visitor center as a physical connector. So if you look back towards the, the vision plan that was done by the trustees three years ago, we actually started with the farmhouse, which is an existing structure owned by the trustees, as being the preferred visitor center location. And this parking lot originally in that vision plan was actually located here in Ox pasture. So after doing some site analysis, there is a wetland that runs right through Ox pasture, and actually the condition here is really wet, so wet in fact that we cannot manage this as moat habitat. And then it was also determined that the farmhouse was both not an acceptable use for public purpose, as well as it was very close to our Wood Lane neighbors. So the first draft of the master plan moves the parking area to this field right here, which is called, oh, gosh, what is it called? I can't remember. Excuse me. Right here, this field right here.
Property line field.
Property line field. And moved the visitor center, shift the, moved the visitor center here as a, as a reuse of an existing maintenance shed, the twenty-four by sixty-foot building, and located it right here in relation to the farmhouse, so that there was a farmhouse visitor center relationship that had sort of a campus feel where we could use both buildings as public buildings. In our final master plan, which you see in front of you today, we determined and we heard from our neighbors that this was a real imposition on these folks here to use this field as a parking area. We moved it to this field, and then we pushed the visitor center away from our property line in front of the farmhouse, and that enabled us to really beef up this buffer with vegetated plantings.
The farmhouse is existing.
The farmhouse is an existing building, and the visitor center is the repurposing of an existing twenty-four by sixty-foot maintenance shed.
Okay.
That currently is right here.
Just so unclear, those are two existing buildings that are there today?
Well, that, that would-
The farmhouse is an existing building, and this is a, a building that is currently right here.
Oh.
That we're proposing to move here.
Okay.
So the exact location of the visitor center, because it's been finagled over time, is the result of some more logistical and regulatory reasons. This reacts to existing site constraints. As you can see, we have our wetland setback here that's really determining exactly where both this parking lot and this entry drive can go. We're doing our best to stay out of that hundred-foot setback, while also using the existing stone walls and existing mature vegetation to shade visual impact of the parking area. And then the visitor center, we want it to stay out of Helen's Meadow, which is an existing grassland habitat that has significant ecological value and is also aesthetically sort of iconic at Stevens Coolidge Place. And so we're trying to wrap around, call it the Helen's Meadow, and maintain it as as much of an open space as we can. More logistical reasons for this location here. We're tying into existing utilities at both the farmhouse and the end of Wood Lane. We have a water connection here to the farmhouse, and then sewer and electric tie-in to the end of Wood Lane here. And then, of course, we have regulatory distances for the accessible restrooms, which will be located in this gateway building between the accessible parking and the bathrooms, and then also accessible restrooms here and the farmhouse. So this building has moved over time in relation to both the existing site conditions, as well as the concerns that we've been hearing from our neighbors. And given all of the existing site constraints, our circulation and flow, we really do believe that this is the preferred location for the visitor center. And also, this design allows us to have, again, that vegetated buffer that helps with blocking views of the building and the pedestrian circulation here.
Will people still be parking in the current, kind of little small parking lot?
So that current parking lot, which is right here, where it will not be used by our daily visitor. It will probably be, be, still be used, we have a, a really great group of volunteers who come every Wednesday.
Okay.
To help with the gardens, so likely they will still park here. But even, you know, staff parking will not be here. This will primarily be closed for everyday visitor use.
Okay.
Was the area to the right of that access roadway, that field there, considered for parking or?
The area, this area?
Field here, there, yes.
So this is Woodchuck Field. We're really trying to keep the drive away from our property line here. So, you know, all of our old Village Lane neighbors are right here. And we just did our best to have that entry drive butt up against the one hundred-foot line as much as possible to stay away from the property line. Well, there's one right here, and it actually goes underneath one twenty-five and continues on the other side, which, again, this is trustees' property.
But I guess everything on the left of the wetland setback, is that wetland?
So there is a wetland that runs along one twenty-five, which is basically runoff from one twenty-five. And then there's also a man-made swale that I'm assuming went in at the same time that one twenty-five went in, that runs across the middle of Ox pasture, which is one of the reasons why it's so wet as well.
Do we, do we have in any of your diagrams the actual extent of all the wetlands on the property?
We, we do, on our, our civil drawings, we have the extents of the wetlands, yeah.
It's just helpful because, I mean, it strikes me looking at this, there's a lot of la, it's cut off, but there's a lot of land at the property to the, to the left, but, and you're not using it, and I assume it's because it's wet, but I don't know.
Well, it's wet, but this is also, so right now, this is all maintained as bird habitat. So this plan was also developed in discussion with our ecological director, our Director of Ecology, who said, limit your disturbance to the fields here. You know, have your entry drive and your parking lot run through one field, don't have your drive run through multiple fields where you're breaking up habitat in multiple areas. So it's the wetland, and then it's also maintaining as much of that open habitat as possible.
You talked to conservation all about, I mean, I like that you, sorry, I like that you're trying to keep this away from the Village Lane road there, I like that. I didn't know if you talked to conservation, a conservation agent, about even going into the wetlands a little bit, just to get it a little bit more of a difference.
We have, we have, actually. I did a site walk with Amy Maxner, and we talked with her and the town engineer and our peer review engineer about that issue. And she said that it would not be the preference of the Conservation Commission. She did not say it would not be allowed, but she said it would not be their preference that we build within that hundred-foot setback.
Okay, uh, I'm not sure I agree with that, but okay, but I'm not on the Conservation Commission, okay. Um, so, stuck, okay, um, all right.
So your second question?
Yes.
Um, I might ask Kathy to speak to that, if you don't mind just running through that question again.
So, well, so the question was about, just, it seems like the use of this property is changing, morphing a little bit. Now, I was curious about the history of that and kind of what the plans are and, and why you're going in the direction you're going. I will say that we're doing a site plan review, so it's not a question, use is not a question that's really before us, but I think to the extent that it impacts where we're talking about parking lots, where we're talking about buildings, I think it's important. But just to note to people who are interested that we're much more limited about what we can do in site plan review than we are for general special permits.
Thank you. Kathy McDonald, Director of Stevens Coolidge Place, one thirty-seven Andover Street, North Andover. The trustees several years ago really started to focus on their public gardens and on a public garden strategy. Americans now are spending more and more time visiting public gardens and doing gardening themselves. We offer programs and educational programs about nature and ecology and the environment as part of what we do, but we also do offer events that are community-based events to bring people in. Over the last three years, it has grown quite a bit with many events introducing the property to people. I think many cultural organizations like the MFA and other libraries do events to get people across that portal to into their gardens or their, their institution, so people become aware of what they're doing and eventually become people who come back to enjoy it themselves. One of the, the strategies behind what we're doing here is hopefully to increase our individual garden traffic because of new improvements to the gardens, and that's a different type of business than, than the groups that we have. And I think by increasing the garden offerings, we allow people to stay and enjoy the property for longer periods of time and, and, and generally have more people, the local community and other people, enjoy those gardens. So I think the, the strategy is to have more individual people coming to the gardens, but we'll still be planning, you know, an amount of educational programming and some events that we do to introduce people to the property.
Okay, um, do you want to have follow-up questions on that? Before we get to stormwater?
I, I see event space on this diagram here, the letter, but do, do you have a pointer?
Yes.
Could you just show us where the event space will be on this diagram?
Well, what I'd like to show you first is where the event space was when I got here in June. So I'm new to the property, new to the trustees, and let me find the house. There's the house. So this right here was the event lawn as of June when I arrived here. And at that time, I heard from our closer abutters about the noise and the distraction of having that event space right there. So what we did now in the interim, we moved it completely to, I'm sorry, completely to the other side of the Stevens Coolidge House to what we call the Hemlock Grove. We also have right here our large ash tree, and when we have a larger group, then the event space is concentrated down here. With this new program, in the program was to have that space in this area for the same reason, but I actually have moved it away from the property lines effective this summer. Also, we had problems with, they were delivering porta-potties and leaving them too close to neighbors' lines. We changed that and said, you know, I have a map where staff is allowed to have these dropped, so they're not next to someone's home. So we have tried to-
Where are the porta-potties going?
So, hmm, they are near the ash tree. There's a sort of a, a line of trees right here by the meadow, and they're tucked in here. We, we do have restrooms in the Stevens Coolidge Place, and to make sure we accommodate people, we bring them in if we have, you know, a, a program of X amount of people. So that was, this, this in the plan, in the future plan, was also to solve the noise and the problem of having people congregate too close to people's property. And so that's why this is, this has always been in the plan, to move it there.
Good question.
Thanks.
And what's the, is, is there lighting along that path, the proposed lighting along? So like, I assume you're going to drive in, park there, walk down to the area here? What's the lighting situation?
Do you want our, I, I have it blown up landscape plan?
Great.
Illustrate that a little bit better. So we have dark sky compliant pole lighting, so the pole light heavy, we have it twelve foot tall, lining this side of the entry drive, and the idea of just having it on one side allows us to have the trees blocking it. We've got this alley of trees along the entry drive as well. The alley is actually lined up to block the lights on the far side. And then the lights continue along the parking, those pole lights continue along the parking lot here to the other side. So those pole lights continue here. And then we have low voltage lights lining the pedestrian walk here. And at some point, so these will likely not be installed now because this is really part of phase two, and likely, when these changes as part of phase two happen, this road, this pedestrian walk will be reworked. So we won't be installing this low voltage bollard lighting at that time, or at this time. So the lights, the low voltage bollards will be located here. So in determining how tall or what type of fixtures we use, we have to balance between the height and the number of fixtures. So having shorter fixtures means we have more of them. And so we landed on twelve-foot-tall poles as hopefully a good balance between number of fixtures and height.
Okay. Uh, why don't we talk about the stormwater concerns?
Now, can I ask you about parking?
Yes, please.
Can you estimate, I know it's not formalized parking across the street, but about how many people, parking cars you can account for on that side?
We're estimating it at sixty.
Okay, and you're calling for sixty?
And we're calling for sixty, and then we also have capacity of overflow for a hundred.
So where would the overflow go?
The overflow, excuse me.
Can, can you put it back up on the, the-
On that green page there?
Yeah.
So just on, just so you know, on the landscape plan, it's located right at that entry drive back here.
So to the right of the entry drive on that same field?
Yeah, it is in this corner here. And that's a capacity for a hundred, so that really solves our capacity issue.
And that wouldn't be formalized, it would just be on the field?
It would not be formalized, so it continues to have the, the meadow plantings. In fact, we're going to overseed it with a more pollinator species.
So how often would you think that overflow would be required?
So I talked to our stewardship manager today about managing that field, and he assumed that during our more active months, which is maybe, what do you think, May to-
To, uh, October?
October, yeah. He would be mowing it once a month, um, and that, you know, I can't, I think that's, would probably be enough.
But how often would it be in use for overflow parking?
So whenever we have an event that maxes out our sixty-car capacity, and I, I can't give you an exact number for that.
So I guess the question, I mean, you call for sixty spots, do you really need a hundred and sixty spots?
Well, we certainly don't need a hundred and sixty spots with any regularity.
That's, I guess my question, how regular?
Is it once a week, once a month? Do you have any estimates?
Oh, I would say, you know, can get back with you for the firm-
Oh, I would say, you know, can get back with you, with a firm figure, maybe there are 10 events that require more parking.
So it's over...
Out of 233.
10 events over those four months though, those people?
I mean, how often do you do like, I mean, I have, I see, but like the winter lights and stuff like that?
Well, the winter lights goes six weeks.
And it's, and we don't park winter lights on the site. So it might actually be, we, it might be helpful to hear from our traffic engineer who's done some more of this capacity work at some point.
Uh, well, you wanna do that now while we're talking about it, and then we'll, sorry.
No, that's all right.
We'll defer.
As interesting as stormwater is.
Yeah. We have a slide for this, or no?
No. It's in the traffic study.
Can you just kind of angle it a little bit more, I guess, for the audience as well?
Yeah. I didn't bring my glasses.
I apologize. So, my name's Scott Thornton, I'm with the NAST Associates, where our offices are in Andover. And we did the traffic study, really focused on existing conditions, review of traffic characteristics to make sure that the proposed driveway location can accommodate the traffic demand from the project. This slide shows the projections that were, that were provided by Stevens Coolidge Place. And these are their goals for future events. And there's, you know, you can see there's, there's 95 to 100 public programs for between, a year, for anywhere between 10 and 100 participants. There's 10 to 14 public programs per year for 100 to 500 participants. Then they have, they're proposing six to eight large events per year for between 500 and 2,000 participants. And then 23 nights of the winter light events for approximately 100 participants per night.
And I do just wanted to acknowledge that this is a really broad range. We wanted to have our traffic engineers just cover a big range of numbers here.
Right, and to that end, we looked at, in order to identify the capacity and the demands that the intersection's gonna have, we looked at the peak events that Stevens Coolidge has data for. And there's a, there's, there's a counter on the municipal lot across, at the corner of Chestnut and Andover Street. And we were able to get some traffic counts from that counter in correlation with the number of attendees at some of these other events. So these are from 2018, for the Mother's Day Tea, which is Sunday, May 13th. There were 336 daily attendees. We looked at the traffic counts from that time period, for that day, over the time between eight and, or between 9:00 and 6:00 PM. And that gave us a count of the daily vehicles, which we then doubled. So, so that volume accounts for not only the Stevens Coolidge traffic, but also some other users that may be parking in that lot, going off to some of the trails in the area. So that's probably a conservative number. To then double it is even more conservative. So we're coming up with about 486 trips on a daily basis for that event, with a peak hour total of 72 trips that occurred between 9:00 and 10:00 AM. To jump down, so we also looked at the Home Sweet Home event, which is Saturday, May 19th. Again, similar numbers, 274 attendees, 374 daily trips, 69 peak hour trips, which occurred between 12:00 and 1:00 PM. Really the key events in terms of traffic generation, worst case that we have data for. The Father's Day barbecue, the peak event, it was Sunday, June 17th. 898 attendees, daily vehicle trips of about 478. A peak hour trip total of 136, so that's total entering and exiting. And that occurred between 3:00 and 4:00 PM, again on a Sunday. And then some, the, the very, the next one down is the Beer Garden event. Occurred Saturday, September 15th, 706 daily attendees, 498 daily vehicle trips, 88 peak hour trips occurring between 4:00 and 5:00 PM. So the peak events occur on Saturdays and on Sundays. We did traffic counts on Route 125. Did a four hour, or a four day count out there. Identified that the average daily traffic flow is close to 19,000 vehicles per day. On Saturday, that drops down to about 16,000 vehicles per day. On Sunday, it drops down to 11,000. So when we have the peak events anticipated, the traffic volume on the adjacent street is actually lower. So that helps out with the, with the, with the analysis. In addition to, so again, these are, these are sort of worst case conditions that we have. We also have some average counts based on summertime periods, summer weekday, summer weekend events, with daily vehicle trips of between 154 and 244 trips on a day. Peak hour trips between 18 and 31. And we're anticipating those peak events or peak time periods to occur in the later afternoon. So we took those, those, these projections, which again, were, there's not really an anticipation of an increase in intensity or more participants expected. It's just sort of an increase in the overall number of events. Which are, which are these numbers here, these include the, the future projections. Take those numbers, we incorporate them into the existing traffic flow out at the proposed driveway location, out onto Route 125, also showing there. And the analysis indicates that during the weekday evening peak time period, again, when we expect the least amount of traffic generation by the site, highest traffic flow on Route 125, we have operations of the driveway with a level of service E, which is about a capacity level. On the Saturday afternoon time period, again, some, consistent with the Beer Garden event, we anticipated a, a level of service D for that driveway operation. And then for a Sunday afternoon, where we would get the Father's Day barbecue type traffic numbers, we're looking at a level of service C. And the reason, as I mentioned, that they're getting better going from the weekday through the Saturday to the Sunday is because the traffic volume is decreasing on Route 125 during those same time periods. Driveway anal, or the driveway layout, again, pretty straightforward. Two 12 foot lanes, wider radii to accommodate larger vehicles. And, you know, probably be some, a little bit of restriping on, on Route 125 in the area of the driveway. Site distance, I'm going in reverse order, but site distance out here meets or exceeds the requirements for the speeds that we measured. Supposed to, for 40 miles an hour, we measured 44 for an 85th percentile. You would, you would typically need about 360 feet of site distance, we have over 650. So, that's sort of a quick snapshot traffic.
Yeah, to get permits from the state?
Yes, state highway, yep. Yeah, and they, they know about the project. We sent them traffic memo, we sent them site plans, we sent them the, the, this driveway configuration. We're anticipating a meeting with them next month. So they're aware of the project, they haven't started any formal review yet.
Where do most people park now for these major events? I mean, I know when I've gone, I just park at the common and walk, so I mean, to be honest, I wouldn't even be using the driveway either way. So I'm just curious where most people park now, 'cause these have been some pretty well-attended events. Where do people park right now?
So, I mean, of course, we max out our parking area here. But we have folks parking on Andover Street and in, you know, the surrounding neighborhoods. So that's, that's an existing issue that we're really trying to, to manage and to relieve by being able to have overflow parking on-site.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm struggling with is like, I don't, I think if everyone's parking on-site, that 60 spaces isn't gonna be enough, and it'll overflow. But people are coming already, and we can't really, the use is not what we're considering right now. It's the, it's the layout with the increased use and how to make, so... Are we having, with, with the increased parking lot, maybe it does help parking along the main street though. I don't know, I don't know how much of the problem it is or not.
There, there's a lot of cars up and down Andover Street for any of the bigger events. That lot fills up pretty fast.
And so, you'd think that parking on-site would be better. But where, right? 'Cause you'd rather have them in the middle there. I, I really don't think traffic, I mean, we'll see what the reports say, but I, I don't see traffic as a really big issue.
And there's enforcement of that each month, so...
What's that?
Then there's an enforcement issue. I mean, if, if you're doing that in an attempt to not have people park along the Andover Street, how do you enforce that?
Oh, I think it's, I mean, you're allowed to park.
There are signs on Chestnut Street.
You're allowed to park on Andover Street. I think it's just encouragement, signs and telling people when, you know, when you advertise the event, hey, we have onsite parking. I mean, and the lighting and all of that would, I think, lead you to parking there. 'Cause you're allowed to park on Andover Street. I mean, if you wanna put no parking or no parking during hours, that's outside of our jurisdiction.
Right. Was there any consideration to right turn only and left turn, I'm sorry, right turn in and right turn out, or?
I hate that left turn.
Well, I just, given the traffic analysis, do you anticipate Mass DOT is gonna have any feedback in terms of crossing that for that turn?
I, I don't think they'll have any issues with it.
And all the other places do it right across Chikering?
There's a, there's a bunch of other driveways up and down Chikering that have...
I, I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it's terrible to left turn there. It's really good for my auto, I've been practicing, but it's, it's really a bad turn to go, especially 4 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, when people are, especially here in the middle, people are going pretty fast down Chikering until you get to Mass Ave, and then you have to slow down to make those turns. I don't know, I'd, I'd like in one, right, right, but...
Well, we are, we're also recommending for major events that police details be out there to, to help people get in and out. And I think the, you know, one issue that you have, one issue that you have with, with current situation, and you wouldn't have with the proposed one, is you have a lot of pedestrians coming from, you know, walking up and down Andover Street, walking across, you know, probably walking from Chestnut Street, walking from the parking lot and, and crossing, crossing Andover Street when you have Chestnut Street traffic, when you have people going in and out of the parking lot. And this, this plan contains all the pedestrian movements on-site. So, you know, there's a lot, I think it, it improves operations and safety in that regard.
Gene, have we, do we ever put any conditions about requiring details for events and things like that? I mean, with this, I like the layout of having, I think it is better to have onsite parking than have everybody coming from, but I think details are important. I don't know if we've ever conditioned, you know, if you're having an event with this type of layout and site plan of more than 1,000 people, 500, whatever X number of having a detail.
Um, not that I know of, but that should come with the police department review, I think, maybe they have a way.
Yeah, if they could look at that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, I mean, it's somewhat...
It's done today, you do it on Andover Street often today.
Yeah, yeah, just if we haven't done it before, doesn't mean we can, I'm just wondering if we have.
Yeah, I mean, it, it may even be subject more to the town by law than...
It may be.
But, you know, I think it's a legitimate point.
Definitely, for bigger events, having police detail definitely relays a lot of concerns.
I know there's a lot of other places that don't restrict it, but this is a pretty concentrated flow when you do have the main events. It's pretty concentrated trying to come out and take that left-hand turn, so...
Right. Okay.
I have a question that I think blends traffic and perhaps even stormwater. How do you intend on maintaining that overflow, that field for overflow parking? Anecdotally, attending winter lights last year, it was freeze thaw cycle, and you, the, the, the house site was a bit slippery. And so I just imagine people getting in their cars and, and trying to maneuver around a, what could be a muddy field with a freeze thaw cycle. Can you speak to that?
So that's one of the reasons why for winter lights, Kathy is working on finding parking off-site and having folks be shuttled onto site. So that meadow will really not be able to be used in the winter, which works well because we don't have events in the winter. And so that hopefully will resolve any winter lights issue of parking there. But as I was saying to Gene earlier, just the, the general maintenance of that field is going to be maintained by mowing.
So there's no concern, concern about, I guess not even in the winter months, but e- even during the summer, if you had a influx of rain and there's an event, cars tearing up that field, impact to not only the wet, adjacent wetland, but maybe even the, the neighborhood, the old village neighborhood? Has that been carefully considered?
We could certainly consider, if, if that becomes an issue, we could certainly consider doing reinforced turf along that parking area. I mean, I've, I've spoken to our stewardship manager, who currently manages the whole site and manages the current parking area about management issues of that overflow parking area. And he doesn't foresee that being an issue because it's more of a seasonal experience. But if we find that it's an issue down the road, I think there are a couple of alternatives that we consider, like doing reinforced turf. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now can we talk about stormwater?
Do we have to? So, as with any project, you always have to meet Massachusetts standards of making sure that any proposed runoff from the site does not exceed the existing runoff conditions. And we have met that to a point where the peak runoffs and peak volumes are actually less than the existing conditions. I blew this up, this is from the stormwater report. But as you read across, sorry, as you read across the, the peak runoff rates, the exist, you have the two-year storms, oh, there we go. You have the two-year storm, the 10-year storm, the 25-year storm, and the 100-year storm. Underneath each storm event, you have existing and proposed. So for the two-year storm, the existing runoff, peak runoff is 3.4 CFS.
How do you, so...
Sorry?
No, no, no. How, really basic.
Basic.
How do you get that number?
So you have to look at... the drainage area that is affected at the site, that's page two. And this is the drainage area that is contributing, the area that is contributing for the project. And so, you have a drainage area that is contributing to the project that you need to evaluate what is happening today. Then you take the drainage area, same exact drainage area for the proposed. And you need to evaluate the different storm events because the existing conditions is not the proposed conditions. The proposed conditions now have a gravel parking lot. The proposed conditions have a proposed building and, um, that are more impervious than pervious as a grass.
So, okay, I guess my question, how do you go out, do you actually go out and look and see what's there and see how the water is running?
Running, yep.
It's not just based on charts and data, is you going out and taking measurements?
No, yes, yes.
That's what I'm, that's, that's my question, okay. And then compared to if you put now, so if we have a big hill of grass here and the water's running, if we put some stones and we put filtration systems and all of that, how it's gonna change?
Yes. And then, um, so then you figure out how are you going to manage that additional runoff? Um, how are you going to treat water quality from the parking lot? So, I'm not gonna get into the water quality right now, but, so we evaluate that and we determined, well, you can put a drainage system underneath the, the proposed road, or you could put in underground infiltration systems, or you can put in the drainage basin that we have decided to put in here. It's an infiltration basin. The elevation of the infiltration bas- basin is based on taking test pits to make sure that you're not in groundwater, because you can't infiltrate into the ground if groundwater exists. So, we needed to evaluate where groundwater elevation, high seasonal groundwater is. And then according to the standards, you need to be two feet above groundwater. And that sets your base for your basin. Questions, this, this would, would good? Then you need to evaluate, okay, what happens for each storm event? And how are you going to contain or slowly release that storm event and evaluate this point? Because that is the point of discharge from pre-existing conditions and post-conditions, post-designed conditions. And so, we have a water quality unit here that has a weir in it that will slowly release the stormwater once it comes up to a certain elevation. And this is all run in a program called HydroCAD, it's all modeled, it's through the state, it's been reviewed by your peer reviewer. And post-conditions, again, as you look at the charts, for example, the hundred-year storm, which is a worst-case scenario that we're required to evaluate. Existing conditions for the hundred-year storm, twenty-one point four CFS. Proposed conditions for the hundred-year storm, sixteen CFS. So there's a decrease in runoff from the property because of this design. Then you have to look at peak volumes, because peak runoffs is a different calculation versus peak volumes that's actually contained in the basin. And for the hundred-year storm, the existing conditions for the peak volume is three point one acre feet. Post is two point seven. Again, less than what the existing conditions are. Before I go into water quality, do you have questions?
Can you adjust that upper part, uh, what, uh, it's pretty flat, but which way does the water flow today?
Up here next. The water.
Naturally.
All naturally flows this way.
That's right, okay.
Yep. These are contours.
Okay.
And it all flows down that.
Okay, got it.
We have another question.
One quick comment.
Why don't we, why don't we let her finish and then you come off, okay?
So, do we have any questions in regards to evaluation of stormwater as far as volume and peak runoffs?
No, for now, well, just save your question a little bit, I wanna let her finish and then.
Okay.
Cause if you have more questions, we can ask them too.
On top of evaluating that, we need to evaluate the water quality that's happening because it's no longer a grassed area. It's now a paved, uh, not a paved, but it's a gravel parking lot. And, uh, the state, state, uh, regulates, you know, how are you gonna handle the first flush? There's the first rain event, um, when you have a, a ten-year storm or you're a twenty-five-year storm or a hundred-year storm, the first five minutes that goes across that parking lot is where you pick up all the, um, uh, any sort of debris or, um, oil residue and that's what needs to be, um, taken care of prior to, uh, hitting down the basin down below. And so, what, how we have evaluated that is we have installed, uh, there's a drainage well that brings it down to the basin along here and it's a five-foot wide with a three-to-one slope, grass and, uh, rain garden so that, with check dams in it, so the water will sheet across the parking lot. And before it goes over the check dam, it is held so that it can infiltrate and settle out the, the dirt and the debris. And then it will continue down the swell. And it does that for five, uh, check dams. So that the, the, um, debris and oil are, are caught up in the rain garden so, which can treat that. So far, that's, any questions in that regard? And again, your peer reviewer reviewed that and, um, agreed with our calculations. And then there was one other for, from your other peer reviewer, T E C. They had a question in regards to the fire apparatus and, um, the turning radius. And so, this, this, um, turnaround is twenty feet wide. At, at the narrowest part, we were able to put on the, it's called a swept path analysis that allows for your longest fire truck to come in and turn around, also to go down here to, um, put out the fire at the welcome center. It's, and this is a, um, reinforced, reinforced turf fire lane um, which can handle seventy-five thousand pounds of the fire truck. And then it would come out and follow down.
All right, anything else that you wanna, we're taking you.
Happy to answer any questions that the board has made.
Well, why don't we take, um, public comments, questions, and then if we have any additional, we'll hit those, okay?
Hello, my name is Melissa Rivers, I live at one seventy-nine Andover Street, um, on the corner of Wood Lane and Andover Street. Um, I, I guess I, I wanna just start by saying when I kind of first all heard of, heard about this project, I didn't truly appreciate that I would be standing here and opposing it as vehemently as I feel like I need to oppose the project. Um, I really, you know, I, I love the Stevens Coolidge Place in general and think it's a wonderful place to go and enjoy. And certainly love to see other people enjoy it, but I feel that the evolution and what we've learned through this process has it just frankly scares me and scares me about how that's gonna impact us in our neighborhood. Um, I know that use is not before you, but that troubles me tremendously because that is a, that is the basis of what's happening here, is that they're changing the use here. So, I would ask, you know, in addition to, I, I, I'm sure you can imagine at the end, I'm gonna ask you to just deny this special permit, but um, before I get to that point, I'd say that I would ask if you're going to, I would first ask that you have, um, a review or ask for the zoning board to review the use itself. Um, and if not, I would at least, if you do end up granting the special permit here, I would at least ask that you try to condition it on some, a use being reviewed. Because, you know, right now, the house at the end of our street on Wood Lane is owned by the trustees and has been used as a residential home. It's now gonna be changed to offices. And right next door to that, which is currently vacant land, they're gonna be repurposing a maintenance shed to be used as a, as welcoming center. That's gonna be essentially at the end of our street, where they're talking about seven, eight hundred people that are gonna be there and, you know, coming right, you know, a hundred feet from our house, which I'll be able to see. They talk about it being at peak times on the weekends, happens to be when we're home with our families and enjoying our, our neighborhood. And now we're gonna have all these people here. And, you know, I know that they, they have said that these events don't have, um, don't have this many people all the time. But that's what they're trying, they're, the intent here is to grow the events. So, while the events have shown that they've been growing in numbers over the years and I see that just continuing to happen. In the end, I don't, I, I would like to see you deny the special permit, cause I don't think they satisfy the requirements for you to, to issue the special permit. I mean, uh, you know, is this site, the location that they wanna use these structures, is it appropriate for, for the location that they wanna do it? Doesn't seem to me that it is, the end, at the end of a residential neighborhood.
That's why I prefaced this at the beginning, so the use part is dictated by zoning, by the zoning board as well as by what's called the Dover Amendment, which means that certain zoning is not applicable to certain.
Understood, but I don't, I don't agree that Dover is applicable here.
But that's not our call.
Correct, which is why I'm suggesting that a, a review be heard on that.
So, that has to be challenged by somewhere, somewhere else, not something that we can condition in a site plan.
But.
So, we have to consider whether or not the proposal for the visitor center is in an appropriate location, whether the proposal for the free use of the office, i- i- whether that's in an appropriate location, whether the parking lot is an appropriate location and whether the driveway is an appropriate location, so.
And, and I, and I, and I do understand that.
What we're gonna.
But what I'm saying is I don't feel as though it is an appropriate location, given where you wanna put it so close to the residential neighborhood that, and, and creating this to be, you know, to, creating it to be an event welcoming center so close to our neighborhood, where they're gonna bring all these additional people through there, that doesn't seem like an appropriate use for, for those structures.
Which part, the visitor center?
Well, yes, the visitor center.
I mean, so the, the, yeah, okay.
I recognize the office conversion piece is completely out of your area, so, but, I mean, that's.
Well, I just, yeah, I guess, I guess my understanding, I guess, and if you could give us more clarity, is that my understanding of the visitor center is it's somewhere you walk in, look around and, and pass on the.
But that's the gateway for everybody, all these eight hundred people to, to go, to go, to go to where, where they wanna go.
I guess I just assumed it was a small, it, it just seemed a small part of this to me. I mean, I agree with you, really, this is about the use of the whole place as a facility, right? As where you're hell hosting large amounts of people. The visitor center, I think, is a very small part of that, to be honest, you know?
But the, but the, but putting those parking lots where they're gonna be put.
Yep, parked them up, yeah.
And putting the visitor center there is bringing all of that to a location that doesn't seem appropriate to me. And, and, and that, that's the point that I'm trying to make. I'm sort of trying to distinguish, I, I get that it overlaps the use, but I'm trying to distinguish that.
Fair enough.
Um, it also is not supposed to adversely affect the neighborhood, is another one of the conditions. And, and what the, you know, that whole purpose is, is certainly going to do that by bringing more traffic and more noise, more light pollution, uh, all of those things. I, I do recognize that the trustees are trying to mitigate those things, they, they have made efforts to do that. I, I acknowledge that, but ultimately, I, you know, I'm not sure that what they're doing is sufficient. It's still, it's still going to, you know, still gonna have a tremendous impact on us. So, sort of for all of those reasons, I would, would certainly ask for you to deny the permit. And the only other, um, comment that I had, and this comes from being the wife of a plumber, um, is that, um, he, he asked, my husband had asked if the, what the infrastructure is going to be like for the, the, the facilities that are gonna be used there and if it's gonna be increased. And is it, is it gonna be that the public will, if the events are gonna be held, will the public be using the bathrooms there in the, um, events, uh, the welcoming center? Um, will it still be porta potties and how is that gonna affect the infrastructure of our sewerage? I don't know if anybody is able to answer to that question.
I don't know about the effect on yours, but I think if you could let us know about, yeah, what, at events or the question about, um, where people are gonna facilities, I think that's a fair question.
Yeah, yeah, I would be happy to address that. So, in the, um, the renovated shed, maintenance and, ma- not maintenance center, um, the renovated maintenance shed visitor center, there are two accessible restrooms that are going into that, that place, which will connect to the sewer along Wood Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for large events, we'll continue to rent porta potties, um, just as the, we're doing now. And that's really to make sure that we're meeting capacity needs, so, um.
So, it will be sharing the same sewer line that we would be, that we'll be using to go through there?
Those two restrooms.
And with the increase of the, the people that are using that, I mean, does that, is that capacity gonna be sufficient?
So, I, you know, all of that will be determined by how we design the system, but we will not be allowed to design a system that negatively impacts the existing sewer structure.
Okay, so that, I mean, that being another concern that we have, one, one of those things that I don't, I didn't think of. Um, so, I, I know you'll hear from many other people, we've sent you letters, you, you certainly know, I, where I, I don't need to reiterate, and I think the trustees, um, know where, where we stand, but just wanted to sort of bring that up and specifically would like you to, at least to attempt to, to get the use reviewed. Whether, I know it's not your review, but would certainly like that to be noted, that I, I think that's a major concern. Thank you.
We have received a bunch of letters, any letters that we've received, uh, will be part of the public record. They may not have made it into the packet right now, but anything that I've received or members of the board received, we forward and become part of the public record. So, we've, and we've reviewed them all. Hi.
Uh, earlier I wanted to.
Tell us who you are, where you live.
Sorry, uh, hi, I'm Victor Flurry, one fourteen Old Village Lane. Um, we've been there for twenty years, nineteen ninety-nine when our daughter was born, uh, we moved to North Andover. When someone asked, um, where does the water go from the trustee's property? And I don't know where all of the water goes, but I know where a steady, steady stream of the water goes. Uh, and actually several streams of water. And one of them goes in between, uh, my property and the French's Susan's property. Um, if, after a rainstorm, you can go to the side of my driveway and literally watch pieces of the asphalt being eroded away by the water. Uh, and so I never knew what was going on there until I talked to Susan and she said, well, that was happening to me on my other side of the property. And then she had to install some underground system of water redistribution because she was having the same problem on the other side. And she said, I don't wanna speak for her, but it, it was very expensive. And what came out of that study, uh, and she has all the information, is that there are some underground, um, I don't know what the right term is, pipes or just ducts, conduits that take water from the trustees' land and takes them into and through our properties. Um, and so, we know where a lot of the water goes. And so, uh, earlier you were showing how, um, we're building asphalt roads and we're building structures that are not, that are not, the word you used was permeable. As an engineer, I appreciate all of these technical terms, so I definitely understand everything that you're saying. Um, and so they're not permeable, so as the water lands on them, they have to go elsewhere. And the reason for this pond that you're creating. And the reason for this pond that you're creating right at the back of my home and Mike's and Susan's home, this water, as you stated, is being funneled into the collecting pond. And there it is somehow redistributed. And so what we're seeing, what the Old Village Lane neighbors are seeing is that we have a pretty big water problem, as it is. And now we're taking water from a large part of the trustees and literally funneling it toward this pond. And where is it going to go? It, it's going to raise the water table that we have there. And as you mentioned, when you do this study, the only, you have to be two feet above the water table in order for you to call this plan good. I believe that's what you said. And so if we funnel all of this water toward this pond, what I'm afraid of and the rest of our neighbors is that what's going to happen when we get the hundred-year storms that we're getting almost every year nowadays? What's going to happen next spring when, when the snow melts and we get a storm? Or is the water table going to rise enough so that all our basements are not going to be filled with water? And so this is something that I have brought up several times, and I downloaded all of the documents that were provided. And I didn't see anywhere where you addressed this problem to our satisfaction. In fact, I didn't see, if you could show me, I would, I would appreciate that.
Pardon me, where do you live in relation to the site of, there's a, I think a photo behind this, or right here, if you could just point to that.
I live, in fact, the parking lot is actually a more direct problem to me because I live right there. That, that's, that's, that's our pool, right there. And so the drainage pool is, is, the pond is going to be right here. And the way that they're designing the swell system is that they're taking water all the way from over here and funneling it toward that. And so now, this is the part that, you know.
So the question, as I understand it, is when the water goes into this infiltration basin, and according to their studies, which are, which are, reviewers are looking at, gives less runoff, but it all goes into the infiltration basin, what happens to it then?
Exactly.
Okay, so we'll get an answer to that question.
And I like the answer. And when I see these numbers, you know, as I, I, I deal with things like this all the time. Like we have a CFS number. What does that really mean? Is that CFS, is some general CFS? Or can you give me a CFS for our specific gradient here in our property? Now, is, does your study tell me exactly what's going to happen there? Because what I see, just as a, you know, as a, just common sense, we're taking all of this water and dumping it here. That sounds like we're not taking water away from our property. That just looks like we're bringing water into our property and.
Well, why don't we let our, why don't we let our.
Can, can I ask you, well, you said something at the beginning about you use different types, you use streams, pipes. Are there, I mean, there's a difference between an underground stream and a pipe. So is there literally a pipe that breaks? Or is it, or are you just using a turn of a phrase?
It, it's more of a phrase. What I know for sure is that when we get a, a large rainstorm during and right after the, the storm, we get streams running along the side of our, of my driveway. And we try to put large rocks there, none of anything to turn.
Pardon, sorry, it's surface runoff.
That's surface runoff. And the same thing was happening on the other side of my neighbor, and then she installed an underground system to take care of it from a, to turn it from a surface problem into a subsurface problem that can go directly into the drainage system. But the, the reason I use the word pipes is that I believe, and this is where I'm not sure, I'm, I'm just remembering kind of guessing, is that the reason that's happening is that when all of this was built originally, they, they put in a means for taking water underground from, in fact, she found manhole covers in her own property, where she said, well, this is the manhole cover and this shows you where the underground system was of draining water from the trustees through our property and maybe into the, the sewer system. So there exists, and I'll, well, I'll have to defer to that, I'm, I'm just remembering the conversation. So there exist underground systems that actually bring water into our property. And over the.
This seems a little bit, I mean, your property is developed, the trustees' property is not developed. Why would the trustees put underground things in, bring property, bring water into your property? I mean, that's just kind of like, why would that ever happen?
I don't believe, like, I don't know, this again, I'm just guessing, but I, you know, what I do know, know is that she had to put in a, because of the same problem I'm having, she put in an underground system. And when I asked her, how did she know? She said, I found a, the person that I hired told me that there was some kind of underground, I don't want to use the word pipe, some conduit that facilitated water, not this, not that the trustees did that, I, I don't know, I don't think that they did. It might have been there from, from the farming days, but that's how the water was coming in. And then it clogged up over time and then it surfaced. And so my concern now is that we're funneling water into that same location.
Why don't we try to get an answer to your question about what happens to the water when it goes into the infiltration basin?
And the other point was regarding the parking lot, over to a parking lot. That literally is like from, this is, it's my age of property, and to that wall, I'll be looking at cars, if they, if that's allowed. And for those reasons, and basically because we don't feel as, as a butters and residents that the trustees really listen to our concerns, I, I would respectfully ask you to deny this permit until they actually sit down with us and work with us to fix these things instead of just plowing ahead. Thank you.
Why don't we get an answer to the basin question?
Not the basin. In regards to the basin, groundwater and surface water are two very different things. We need to handle surface water, and the groundwater elevation is two feet below the pond, which really isn't a pond. It's a dry basin that will infiltrate the first flush of the storms. So the groundwater elevation is not going to rise, and it is going to be captured in that basin and then slowly released downstream. In regards to.
When you say slowly released, is that like, how does that actually work?
It, it slowly infiltrates into the ground and then also, here, has a control release that goes out this way.
Is that, okay.
And, and, and this is the point of design for those numbers in regards to the two-year, the ten-year, the twenty-five-year, and the hundred-year storm.
So that release channel that you're showing there, once it comes out the end of that release, in which direction do the contours have it flow from the point of release, which direction does it go?
It follows the natural contour in this direction, as it follows today.
And does it, if you go further up, does it cross under one twenty-five?
If you go further up, there is a culvert that crosses Chicaring Road. And I did go out and investigate that, and currently that is undersized and blunt, which could be contributing to upstream water problems. In addition to your concern in regards to runoff from the trustees' property, we're responsible for the drainage area that contributes to the development site. So we follow the contours and the ridges that flows into the area that we are developing. We are not responsible for all of the trustees' property or the property that's upstream from us on another drainage area. The high point on your drawing is, is the area that we need to handle. I don't know about the underground piping or the drainage swales that you have issues with. However, as soon as you put a pipe in the ground, groundwater wants to follow that pipe, just in general engineering design effects. So if you put a pipe in the ground that's in the groundwater or near the groundwater, not just the pipe that is conveying the water, but the stone that's, the, the, the pipe sits on, wants to convey the water also. But again, that drainage area is going towards village property currently, and we are not changing any of that, contours or the grass. We're not increasing any of the runoff in that direction. We are responsible for this area that we're developing to make sure that it continues to infiltrate and it continues to not increase the runoff.
Do you have any perhaps, that, I mean, the culvert is kind of interesting. Who owns that? Can it be, can anything be done to help the situation?
I'll, I'll check with PPW regarding that.
Okay.
But this point of discharge is leaving property to a culvert that you're aware of that's not functioning?
Yes.
So, Leslie Whitten should be making the recommendation.
Okay, so we'll look into that culvert. I mean, maybe that will help, right? And if it's something on our property.
It doesn't appear that's going to help Old Village Lane residents because there's no change to that flow in that direction.
Correct, there's in that direction currently, the existing runoff from that property and, and post-runoff is less than what is contributing to that culvert today.
So understood the requirements of what you need to do. Any suggestions that you might have for assisting down there? Sure, it would be appreciated, that's my understanding. Okay, yeah, well, okay.
Kelly Premier, 169 Andover Street. So I, my home directly about the estate, might we share a stone wall? The homes have been there two hundred-plus years. So as residents, I'm just going to hit some high points here. I echo Mrs. River's sentiments to please deny the special permit. We don't think it qualifies. Please wait for a chance for some type of zoning review for the use of the property. This has been a continuing issue over the past three years, the use of the estate. This isn't, it's a lot of problems now. We've been talking with the selectmen, the last meeting, trying to just get the use reviewed of the property. It's adversely impacting the neighborhood and would certainly ask the town not to continue to make changes and allow them to do things to continue to grow in this way. Really curious about how they can convert a house, something that's been, as a residence, to an office at the end of our street. You know, it's, you know, been a home, you know, with one, two, three, four people living there, and now it'll be an office with people coming and going all day, as well as building, building a visitor, a visitor center, a retail space, which where they will be bringing fifty thousand people a year through. And then I don't know if you noticed that the one, first picture that we saw, that red line, that goes right by my property. So those fifty thousand people a year, they'll be bringing the people right there. I understand the logistics of where things go. I guess my comment is if that's truly the only place that they can put a visitor center and their offices, perhaps this isn't, the Stevens Coolidge Place isn't, isn't the right area for this type of growth for events for two thousand people. If they can't host these things and have the logistics and not adversely impact homes that have been there two hundred, three hundred years. Also, what we're looking at and what I've seen so far is phase one, I think, is what they're terming it. There's also phase two items that adversely affect us, and it feels like we're only looking at phase one. Phase two, they're building garden rooms on the other side of my property. Not exactly what those are, but in other garden rooms. So there's more things happening there than we're looking at now. So it's certainly asked with all of the massive growth that's happening that we take a holistic view of all these changes. Maybe not at the same level because it is a later phase, but it's more things happening that are impacting my family, my neighborhood, and in our three districts. That's my list. Thank you.
It's nice to be here saying something positive. Since, since the last time I was here, I was against something, which means I could be all the more brief.
All right.
Brad Wakeman, 140 Academy Road. I live in the old center and I support the trustees' plans for the Stevens Coolidge Place. I'm a member of the trustees. I hope all of you are too. And I volunteer on their governance committees. And I've been involved in active, in the protection of open spaces for nearly thirty years. I care about protected public open spaces, and I've learned that the best way to promote land protection is to promote people engaging with the land. I think we're lucky to have the trustees in town. Their mission is to preserve for public use and enjoyment properties of exceptional scenic, historic, and ecological value, places like the Stevens Coolidge Place. Here in North Andover, they're the third largest landowner. Only the town itself and the Commonwealth own more. Over six hundred acres, all of it, almost all of it, open to the public. Their work here in North Andover, I think, often goes unnoticed and perhaps even unappreciated. The gardens at the Stevens Coolidge Place and the trails at Wire Hill are so great and so well-used because of their, their staff and their volunteers, over fifty volunteers. Their work, they take care of their properties, and their work contributes to our quality of life. I understand the neighbors' concerns. I'm, I'm sympathetic to them, but I think their, I think the trustees' plans for the Stevens Coolidge Place are net positive. And I, I understand the negative sides of it too. It's a new and more welcoming and safer entrance, significant investment in the property and in the gardens and new trails. For about sixty years, they've maintained and owned the Stevens Coolidge Place and kept it open to the public for the people of North Andover. In recent years, they have increased the programming. Those of us in the old center have always had the Stevens Coolidge Place as our special place. New programming has brought new people to the special place from all over town, from downtown, from the library district, from out country, from across the Merrimack Valley and across the Commonwealth. The reason for this programming is to connect the people with the land, and people are more likely to care for land and support these beautiful scenic, historic, and ecological special places if they experience them firsthand. So I think, I think this is a net good project, but I certainly am sympathetic and understand the concerns of the neighbors. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Fina. I live at 124 Old Village Lane. Victor's my neighbor, so I live closer to Chicaring, right on the cul-de-sac of Old Village. I'm also a card-carrying member of the trustees. And in regard to the gentleman that just spoke, my, I guess my concern would be if you live next door to the property and with the increased activity, because it really has turned into more of an event center. You know, I, I, you know, that's, that's really my concern, the, the, the frequency of events, the noise. You know, in the wintertime, the fall, the winter, when the trees go bare, as the trees have gone bare over time because of whatever storms we know, we get the, the sound of the traffic, the lights from, from Chicaring Road as well. So, you know, my concern would be with the increased events, because really that's what this plan is designed to do is, you know, I know the studies are based on what the, the current situation is, but with the increased parking, you know, I think the objective is to bring more people to the property, which, listen, I enjoy the property as well, but, you know, again, the frequency, the noise, also the issue with the, the water, the runoff water. I can support Victor in that I've seen the water. My daughter plays in the puddles on the streets when she was younger. You know, it literally is like a, like a little river that runs between. You know, it literally is like a, like a little river that runs between Victor's house and Susan's house, and then between Susan's house and the next-door house, uh, the amount of water. But, um, you know, my yard is roughly seventy yards from the retention basin. So although I understand the design is intended to reduce the amount of water, you know, I think if you live in the neighborhood and you experience the high water table and then the runoff, you know, naturally with more water running in that direction, there would be a concern with additional issues. I have two sump pumps in my basement, um, so again, more of an issue of the water table. But, uh, the close proximity of the, of the, uh, overflow parking kind of alarms me too. I, one of you guys had brought up, uh, the question of why not put the lot in Ox, what was it? Uh, the neighboring meadow, um, I forget which one it was called, Woodchuck Meadow, uh, which was, I, I'm sorry, Ox pasture, which is on the other side of the, the, um, the other wetland in between the two, um, which would be, you know, this thing seems to have a lot of steam. I would love the parking to be as far away from my area, but I can sympathize with the people on Wood Lane too. I don't want to seem selfish and just get it further away from my yard. But, um, you know, that would be one of my suggestions. I know, understand, I think Elizabeth, you mentioned there were, uh, was it a plover or, I'm sorry, that's the cape, the birds?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can, I'd be sympathetic to the birds, but I, you know, it's my backyard really. You know, I, I walk my dogs back there. I, I do enjoy the land myself, but, um, you know, there seems to be some alternatives to possibly move these lots further away. But again, the noise, the lights, the frequency of events, the water. I just wanted to reiterate my concern as well to you guys. So, thank you.
In terms for this?
Um, I will take concern back to DBW to find out about the, um, drainage issues on, um, on Chickering.
Peer review?
Peer, peer review, I will follow back with the, um, stormwater as well. Because the stormwater reviewer did not indicate, um, there's an issue with, um, the discharge on there. So I'll, I would, I feel like I need to follow back with her on that. Um, Civil, uh, actually received comments yesterday and today for Civil and Storm Review. So Civil, it sounds like their, it, their review is completed and they gave several conditions, um, which should, which they suggest should be incorporated within the, um, decision. Which I can list off now or just record and save until?
So I guess my question for members of the board is, do we need one more meeting to discuss this and go through it and then come up with a draft decision for after or try to vote on it on the next one? That's, I'm just gonna see where people are.
Well, we're, 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 we're gonna get some more information, right?
Seems like we have a little bit more information.
Could we, could we get the information and be ready to vote or?
And, and conservation needs tomorrow to discuss this as well.
Okay, so if we can get everything and get a draft, potential draft decision with conditions that would be appropriate. Again, so what we do is we get a draft of if we were going to approve it, what conditions and things like that. Doesn't mean we're going to approve it, we're still gonna discuss it and, um, and vote on it. Um, but if we did, um, so we'll have a draft, but I'd like to kind of leave open the parking situation because I, I know myself, I'm not convinced one way or the other if those are all appropriate and where the, the, the location, the exact locations. So just kind of leave that a little bit ambiguous, but if there are conditions that we can put in that we know we would want, put those, get it as a really more of a template, we'll see where we're at.
I don't think we need to do an organized sidewalk, but I would certainly like to walk out there and I'm wondering if it were possible to stake where the parking lot is going to be or just some of the key features. I don't know.
I'd actually like to be part of a sidewalk. I mean, I, I don't know if we have to organize it, but I, I would like to go see it, stake it out.
I mean, I would do it and it, I think it's such that you probably could walk. I mean, I don't, again, it's private property, but I mean, it's generally accessible. If, if you would give us the ability to do that on our own, that would be great.
We would be happy to host an organized sidewalk or allow folks to come as they please. So the site elements are currently staked out. So you're welcome to come whenever.
Are the landscape buffers that you're adding staked out as well? So at the Endowood Lane and that path going across?
Those are not.
I think that would be helpful.
We can stake those out as well. So you're talking about where the?
Where you're adding density in terms of the landscaping separating you from the neighborhood.
Yeah, we could add those, sure.
As an a-butter, you're certainly welcome to come onto my property to see the impact as well. I'm assuming most of my neighbors as well would welcome you coming onto our property and seeing the impact and how close it is to all of us. So an organized sidewalk would be great because I mean, neighbors could organize around it.
Just make sure if you're doing an organized si- sidewalk, then that becomes?
Yeah, I just don't have enough time. Um.
So if you go out individually, not at the same time, so it is not a, you know, meeting? You could do that, or it could be i- if there's, um, you know, three or more is maybe considered a?
Yeah, if there are any stake.
Competing.
And then we could stake the landscaping, that would be great. And then I think people can go out individually on this one because I think you just need to see, basically see where things are gonna be more than the sizes of them. I think we have that sense.
The only other thing is that, I mean, this is obviously a situation where there's a very interesting, I think, public policy dilemma and, uh, right that the usage of the property is really the issue and is it fully compliant with zoning or not? Um, we're in an interesting position. I mean, I'm not, even though that responsibility for that is not primarily with us, I think to some degree we should, should think about it. I mean, I'm gonna go back and read the, uh, the bylaw again to see what all the uses are in, in the district.
So, but I think it gets complicated because I think, as I understand it, there's. Is there a decision on whether Dover Amendment applies?
The building commissioner makes the zoning use determination, so if you want something more formalized, I guess.
Has it been, has it been examined? I mean, I don't think it does.
The building inspector can make whatever determination he wants. I know it's primarily his responsibility and I will defer to that, but that doesn't mean other people can't think about it too.
Oh, no, absolutely.
No, I agree, and I, but that's my point is that I think it's complicated and I don't think there's an easy answer. And so, doesn't mean we can't think about it, but I think if that's gonna be argued and decided it, it would have to be in a different.
But if you think about it, this is interesting. I mean, it's just about, the reason why we're here so late tonight and all these other nights is because we have projects that have impact on neighbors. Every single thing we have, it's amazing how much of this recently has been going on. But if you think about it, we always ask the question of how do you do mitigation? Like even like when we were doing that gas station, remember we were talking about the hours and everything? And, and to some degree, we have some legitimate role to play in determining like, you know, when things can stop, when things can start, and.
Hours of use.
Hours of use and how late things go and, you know, i- i- in this case, I think it's, it's actually more the frequency of events and the size of the events, which is a little bit different. But that's, it's, it's a legitimate issue. And, you know, Mr. Wakeman brings up a good point that, you know, there's complementary public benefits of, of doing it, but it's also, you know, zoning to some degree is meant to protect the people that live close to where a use occurs.
I think it's totally legitimate issue and I really question the, the, the use under zoning, but at the same, or Dover or whatever, whether it's allowed, not allowed, but at the same time, I think we have to look at is the visitor center that they're proposing and the parking lot that they're proposing is that before the use or after the use? It's sort of chicken and egg, I agree, but that's what they're doing on the site plan and, and so I'm not sure that, I mean, they could do all these events without, if we deny the special permit, they can still do all of these events, right?
Yeah.
And people would just park wherever they wanted, not on site, so it may be worse.
I don't think, I don't think that, I think this is decoupled from the use because the use issues are pers- you know, they're, they're there now, they're present now. They could build this and, and maybe some finding on use by others would yield that, that they couldn't hold so many events or the size of events. But this, I think, would still, I think this would still be desired by the trustees to build out. I, I still think they would have.
I don't think adding a visitor center and onsite parking is going to be what floods more people to the property.
Correct. And so, right, I, no, definitely.
I am sympathetic to the neighbors' concerns, obviously. But whether they do this or not, the, the number of people going to these events, it's, I don't see it slowing down.
Correct, so it, right, so it, it is an issue that needs to be addressed. And I think to John's point is how can we, within our role, help? I think that's all we need to, to think about. Um, and I think that some of these other issues should be addressed in other ways.
I mean, this, this is an interesting one because you're right, and you said it very clearly, is our ability under site plan review is actually very limited. It's, it's very, very difficult to deny something with site plan review. It almost has to be engineering ineptitude in order to, to say no to it. But there's, there's all these other broader issues involved that, you know, are public policy issues that are tough issues.
They are, and I, and I do think that. There, there, at least from what I've seen, that there has, I know one of the gentlemen said that the, that, that the trustees need to work with the neighbors. I have seen some of that, at least it's evident to me. I'm not sure that it'll ever be enough for the people that are really significantly impacted by the change and the increase of use, um, but I have seen some, so to the extent that you can, anything can be done even outside of what's required to help with stormwater, to help with mitigation, we certainly appreciate it, so, um, okay.
One more comment. I mean, there's also the issue of the increased activity on the town common. I mean, that's also another big burden, I shouldn't say burden, but increased activity, at least people parking at the beginning of Old Village Lane, at the trustees, I mean, because there's, you all live in towns.
But I would argue back there is you, the common was there before Old Village Lane was there before you were there.
No, I, I understand.
And so to some degree, you're taking the benefit of the common but not willing to pay the cost of it. So again, and I, and I'm not trying to be difficult because I understand if I were in your situation, I would think exactly the same way. I think the question becomes, can you reach a compromise? Can you reach a balance? Because, yeah, y- you don't want every weekend, uh, cars to be in front of your house. I get that, you know, and I wouldn't want that to happen. But at the same time, you know, like, I, I live near Spolax, okay? And this time of year, the traffic sucks in the weekends, pardon my French, but it's terrible. But I view that as a reasonable price to pay to live next to that for the rest of the year, so I'm willing to tolerate that. And that's really what it comes down to, and that's what I'm thinking of the balance.
I mean, there's a same issue too with kids, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Riding their bikes and cars constantly going up and down.
Yeah.
It's, it's a struggle we deal with with any project of significance.
It's the same thing we're talking about with, with apartments and stuff like that. It impacts on a micro level immensely the people that live right there, but there are also positive macro benefits to the town and people at large. And how do you weigh those? And I guess that's what we're trying to do. So, okay, November twenty-sixth, continue this hearing. We'll all try to individually go out and take a look and see what we can do about a decision.
And is there anything else that the board would like to do? The trustees to be responding to for that next hearing?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all right, thank you all so much for your time.
Yeah? Yeah?
Yeah. I gotta do that, I gotta do the restaurant.
These are hard ones.
There's a couple issues from TDC. Yeah, can I call up with you tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Saw that the, uh, Democrat won the governorship. You have to be a pretty bad Republican candidate to lose. Yeah, Virginia's in the state house, uh, the senate went Democratic control. I lived in northern Virginia, northern Virginia is like, super liberal down there. You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
On this floor?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't think so. I mean, do they want us to? I don't know, I mean, you can talk about, I, I have no mind. Yeah, I just, I just, my brain is about to shut off, so.
Yeah.
If you want to, if you want to be productive, I'd say put it like first and then next meeting. Leave it to, to watch. Hi. Could I take a nap? Yeah. I don't know what I wanna, I don't wanna talk. Had enough stormwater for today.
Party.
They're not broadcasting anymore, the meeting, that was the, it's not on the broadcast, you know, we're watching.
Welcome back. Yeah. So that's why I'm telling it to come back another day. Yeah, no, so I, I, I can't think about it right now, so. All right, so Monica, the MS four permit, we're gonna have them come back.
We're, we're going to have to reschedule them at a later date.
Great, let's try to get it to, whatever date we pick, let's try to take it at the beginning of the, uh, meeting because MS four is complicated. And so, uh, I'd like to have a really good discussion at, uh, seven o'clock on it, not at, oh, good lord, eleven thirty? So yes, so we're gonna continue the MS four discussion. The, I, I think we should also continue the accessory dwelling and inclusionary zoning bylaw discussion. I would like to take them at the beginning of the next meeting to at least have a high-level conversation about people's thoughts about those types of bylaws, what we are kind of looking to do, if people are looking to do them, and then we can get into the nitty-gritty at the next date after that.
Yes, please review the information that was provided to you because it does provide some good thought material.
Okay, is that good with everybody? Do that, okay. Um, do we need to do the, the planning board meeting calendar? Should we do that tonight? Does that helpful, not helpful? Does it matter when we do that?
No.
No, okay, so, let's do all of those things at the beginning of the next.
Did I just miss the zoning items?
We're gonna, we're gonna.
They want to do them at the beginning of the next meeting.
Is that okay? We'll do it at the very beginning and try to really delve into them. I just don't think we're gonna make much progress tonight.
No, I agree with that. I don't, I was wondering if maybe like two board members and I meet separate and try to go through some of that detail first? Or if that would be helpful or not?
Well, well, I'll leave it to every, individually, if people, I would, actually, I think that's a really good idea. I- if you have thoughts or questions in the next two or three weeks, try to meet with Jean or you can even do it with, with, two of us can do it at the same time and kind of go over it so you can talk through the ideas behind the accessory dwelling and be, behind inclusion, what kind of things you like, what kind of things you don't like, and then that will help us facilitate the discussions. I think that's a really good idea to try to do. So, um, maybe Jean, if you could send us a couple of dates where you maybe have some availability and maybe we could schedule two of us to come in?
Yep.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you want the long story or the short story?
I assume it's the short story.
Oh, yes, yes, I do.
Short story and what I'd liked, if we could do, is there are some kind of. Short story, and what I'd liked, if we could do, is there are some kind of, I think, s- smallish points that we maybe haven't covered in various, um, meetings, that I think we just need to at least have on the record is what's going on with them. And I'm gonna try to kind of bullet point those for us for tonight and where we're, where we're at in the process would be great.
Okay, well, um.
I just, just say whatever you wanna say.
Mister Chairman, we were going to go into the very interesting discussion on stormwater.
Yeah.
Uh.
Were you?
Yes, and traffic, as well as, uh, construction sequencing. Uh, but, uh, wha- what we'll do is we'll just go very quickly through the, uh, number of those slides, and then we can touch upon some of those points. Uh, we have forty slides, we're probably gonna go through maybe ten or ten of those slides, maybe fifteen, not even. Uh, but we'll go through them as quickly as we can. Um, with us are, uh, John Plant and Nate Kirschner of Langen Engineering, as well as Mac Uzzi, Vice President for Development from, from Hillwood. And Alan Keller and Attorney Michael Rosen are here, representing the current owners, sixteen hundred Osgood Street, Osgood Landing LLC. So I, I think first we'll start off quickly with, uh, Nate Kirschner just running through, um, stormwater, walking you through stormwater and sequencing. And then follow up with, uh, uh, a short discussion on traffic. And we could touch upon some of the other topics that had been raised by the, uh, by Monica. And we could touch upon those as well quickly, we could.
Again, maybe we could, we, as we did last, almost every time, we could, you know, without public comment, so that's why we try to take you guys last, because there's public comment and you're all getting paid to be here. Um, s- but maybe if there's some really substance stuff that we can work through to kind of move this along, if we could move it up in the agenda either next time or the time after. Okay, go.
Uh, I, I noticed a lot of smiles when, um, actually, for the record, Nate Kirschner of Langen Engineering. Uh, I noticed a lot of smiles and excitement when we mentioned stormwater, so I will be as brief as I can. Uh, happy to answer any questions or dive into more detail as needed. Uh, I think last time when we were in front of the board, we still had our peer review outstanding with Horstley and Whitten. Uh, we've received a concur- uh, I guess a concurrence letter from Horstley and Whitten that we've addressed all stormwater design concerns. Monica, if you, just for the record, I guess, can you go to slide six, please? Um, obviously, the majority of the sites being demolished as part of this proposed redevelopment. Um, from the mass DEP stormwater performance standards, it is being treated as a redevelopment site. The slide in front of you just speaks to the ten standards with res- with respect to stormwater performance based on the mass DEP. Again, Horstley and Whitten reviewed, provided comments, uh, all relatively minor in nature, nature. We provided a supplemental response, supplemental calculations and things of that nature. I can walk you through each of the ten standards. Uh, as a redevelopment, we're not required to meet all of them. We are required to, to the greatest extent practical, uh, comply with these ten standards. So you could see of the ten, there's two that were met, are met to the maximum extent practical. Uh, all other standards are met. Um, I got ten more slides on stormwater, if you would love for, like me to dive into it, but.
So our peer consultants have gone back and forth with the applicant and everything has been met, is that accurate?
Whether you stand with conservation?
Second.
Whether you stand with conservation?
With respect to conservation, um, we've been to two hearings with, with the Conservation Commission. Um, they have set up a subcommittee meeting to walk through some of the finer points of some of the particulars of the project. Um, we met with the subcommittee last week, we have a Conservation Commission meeting next week. Or, I'm sorry, tomorrow, tomorrow evening, I'm, I'm off a week. Um, in, in good shape there, again, their primary focus was having the peer review completed, that's been addressed. Um, really, construction sequencing is the other item that they're, they're speaking, um, with interest about at this stage.
Let me go to the structure sequence, if anyone has questions or comments, but otherwise, we're gonna.
I'm just curious, very high level.
Yeah.
What are you doing stormwater-wise? I don't expect you to point out every structure or anything, but. Nope, absolutely.
Where's it going?
Yeah. Very high. I guess if you go, let's do. So, go to, I guess, we'll go to slide seven. I, I mean, the, the, the best part of the story here is, despite the significant redevelopment of the property, th- this is the existing conditions, green represents landscaped areas in, in previous coverage. If you go to the next slide, this is the proposed condition, where we eliminate about twelve acres of what's currently impervious area, buildings, asphalt, things of that nature. Um, that's a big piece of really the stormwater story is, you know, re- restoring some, you know, particularly in the buffer areas adjacent to the Merrimack River. Um, the following slide, I'm just gonna go through each slide quickly, because it's kind of will answer your questions. Really shows the different outlet locations, I mean, it's, it's a pretty standard, modernized stormwater system, including modern BMPs. Lot A, um, which is the office building to remain, there is a couple sediment basins, they have sediment four bays for, you know, to help with TSS removal. Uh, the whole property is, you know, closed pipe drainage net system with deep sum catch basins for water quality. Um, if you go to ten, it's really a chart summarizing, lot A again is the office building, lot B would be the Amazon building. What we're showing for, you know, different stormwater treatment features throughout the property. Um, and then lot, the slide eleven, kind of shows you graphically, lot A, what we're showing, green is some of the stormwater BMPs, blue represents the pipe networks. And we're calling out, you know, seven four bays, infiltration basins, and dry wells, things of that nature. Uh, the next slide, it's the same, we have some wet ponds and some additional wa- water quality features throughout this property. Um, because it's a complete tear down and redevelopment, obviously, we, we're not confined to some of the reworking of the existing system that's on lot A. That's, I can get in, I can walk you through each of them, but that's, that's really high level what it is. Uh, if you go to slide, I guess that's, that's really the end, the last slide in our stormwater presentation. If you wanna. Yeah, I guess, any other questions on stormwater? Next slide, please, hold on. Construction sequencing, just broke it up, uh, next slide, please. So, at a high level, from the engineering and owner developer side, we broke it into three phases. Obviously, a lot goes on in each phase, we're working with contractors, obviously, we wanna leave some flexibility for the contractor to handle the nuances of this project, the complexities with moving existing mechanical equipment, so that lot A, buildings twenty and twenty-one can remain in service. Obviously, all of that is, you know, the initial stage of this. Phase one is, it kind of summarized, you know, in bullet format here, and our, our plan set reflects really these three phases within the construction sequencing of the soil erosion sediment control plans. Um, you know, but high level, phase one, establish soil erosion sediment control features. Obviously, there's abatement, which we've talked about, I think, very briefly with respect to some of the existing older buildings that'll be demolished, as well as utility disconnects, you know, and, um, some of the massive demolition work that will be required. Uh, phase two, it's a supplemental, uh, installation of soil erosion sediment control features. Uh, mass earthwork, rough site grading, construction of several retaining walls throughout the site, and then prepping the building pad for construction for the Amazon building, um, would be part of phase two. And then phase three is obviously everything that's left, which is vertical construction, stormwater utility installation, paving and landscaping, and final site stabilization. I guess the one thing I forgot to mention in phase one would be, the, really, one of the first things we have to do is relocate the solar panels, which was a discussion point at our last meeting. So, this is, you know, I guess if you go to the next slide, Monica, it's really a graphic representation. These are colorized versions of the plans within the plan set, showing what infrastructure is gonna be put in place. Stockpile areas, proposed erosion sediment control basins, perimeter, erosion control measures, things of that nature. Next slide is the phase, what's proposed in phase two. You can see we're outlining the building foundation for the proposed, uh, Amazon facility. Uh, the next slide, buildings in place, we're doing paving, final grading, landscaping, and things of that nature. Next slide, um, actually, on a separate but related topic, one item that I think is probably on the bullet list of things that we haven't talked in detail about is there is a, uh, activity use limitation area with on the site. Uh, it does somewhat play into the, it, well, it does play into the stormwater design, uh, as well as some of the constructions phasing of the project. Um, the black dashed line that's called out on the plan is that AUL. Um, that area is no longer actively being remediated, that's all been closed out with the DEP. Um, during construction, there will be an LSP providing oversight of all work within the AUL throughout all phases of construction. Um, so, we had that slide in there, because we do know that is a, just a, a to- a talking point with respect to the application. Next slide. I don't wanna hear. Yep, uh, and I didn't, again, I expedited my presentation on those topics, happy to answer questions or pass the mic off to.
Good evening. John Plant, professional engineer with Langen Engineering Environmental Services. High, high-level overview of traffic, right now, we're resolving some methodology conversations with DOT uh, that we expect to get resolved this week. Uh, and upon that resolution, we will be able to finalize our response to the peer review. Uh, we reviewed those comments, have responded to, uh, most of them, we're waiting for DOT to, to give us a thumbs up on one, one trip generation conversation. So, that's where we're at with, with the process, with the peer reviewer. Um, just to, uh, again, an overview here, the existing site, uh, has the office and some repurposing of the old manufacturing building, uh, which was generating traffic. We're going to be taking that traffic that was generated out of that manufacturing building um, and removing that from the road and adding our trips relating to, uh, the Amazon facility as well as full occupancy of the office building, and we use that to analyze our impacts. Um, and as you can imagine, what this site used to be, uh, when it was in full operation, had a significant amount of traffic that was associated with it, so the, the roadway infrastructure in the area is, is pretty substantial, which, um, has an impact, a positive impact on, uh, post-opening of this project with being able to accommodate the traffic that is there. Um, we're not, uh, reducing traffic from the, the entire development, because we are considering the office as full occupancy, we wanted to consider that in our analysis. And the trips generated from the existing uses on the site that'll be removed when the buildings are demolished or have been subsequently being removed recently, um, we will generate a little bit more trips with our Amazon facility. But overall, um, it's, it's under the, the MEPA threshold of trips. And, you know, we analyzed, uh, this study area that you see here. Your peer reviewer suggested, uh, a few extra intersections, which we have done, we've taken counts at, and we've analyzed. And in our report has a- all the detail of, of that analysis, and we'll be adding some more analysis based on the peer review comments.
When you figure, how do you figure out how many daily trips are needed for the Amazon employees?
It's empirical data, they, they know how many, um, employees they're gonna have, and they know how, how this facility, what will process for trucks and why and when. Um, so based on the number of, of employees and the number of trucks, we c- we use a factor for the employees, a factor of two, in, 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 and out. Um, we, in this case, we're using, uh, is it, uh, two thousand one hundred and fifty-four employees. Um, this facility has continually undergone, um, internal process changes, where their robotics become more efficient, and they've, they've made it more efficient and safer for their employees. So their employee count has gone down, I think publicly, Amazon announced that they would probably have fifteen hundred jobs here. We're being conservative, uh, in taking into account that the, what, uh, the counts were before this latest iteration of this building. So that would be the two thousand one hundred and fifty-four.
Does that also include the office?
In the office, we're using a hundred percent occupancy, where, when we did the counts out here, there wasn't a hundred percent occupancy. But for the analysis of impact, we're assuming a hundred percent occupancy of the office, so we have those volumes coming up too.
And is the employee number static? I know Amazon's employee number is not always static, you know, throughout their busier times of the year, I see holidays and things like that.
So.
Does it account for that?
For, that, that number is the average per ye- you know, over the year, outside of the peak holiday period.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the standard you'd apply for designing, uh, both, uh, for designing mitigation, and that's DOT's methodology also. And this, this will, obviously, during the height of, uh, holiday season, that those number of employees will increase.
Could we, do we, is, can we get numbers on that? I mean, obviously.
Yeah, they're, they're actually in, they're, they're, they're referenced in there.
Okay.
Um, we also, uh, just to take a step back, this tenant wants to make sure the infrastructure works. So there is vested in making sure the mitigation or lack of still works. And we, we investigate, even though DOT doesn't require that melo- methodology, we investigate what is the peak season and are the improvements that are being recommended capable of accommodating those? So we look at that ourselves.
Great.
So, um, so we've, we've, this shows the study area, if you, next slide, please. Um, internal circulation, uh, in green here, you'll, you see, that's the, kind of the in and outs for the office. The two driveways for the office will be maintained. The two driveways, north and south, are in the same location as, as out there today. Um, the north driveway, you see in the yellowish color, that is the truck routing. Uh, the trucks, uh, will be coming to and from, uh, four ninety-five from the north and enter, um, separated after the initial part of the road, separated from any vehicles coming into the truck court and loading on the east and south side of the building. And what you see there in purple are the, uh, Amazon employees and how they would get in, into the, the circulation. So what we're proposing, next slide, please, what we're proposing is, uh, the north, well, this, this just, this slide here kind of gives you an illustration of when the volumes, uh, are coming into the Amazon project. So you have the associates, these, those are the employees. Um, the teal is the in, they come in, and the, and the yellow is the shift change. And you, you'll see our peak period is on the horizontal, is, um, both for the morning peak and the afternoon peak is outside the roadway peak. Uh, but we analyzed, in the, in our report, we analyzed both. So we would know what the, the additional traffic added from the project to the peak hour of the roadway impact is, as well as the peak hour of the tenants of the, of the project on the off-peak period of the roadway. So this just is an illustration to help visualize that, next slide. And, um, th- this just shows the, the improvements that we're, we're proposing to mitigate our impact. Uh, the north driveway, currently, that signal is just on flash, we're proposing to make it a full signal again. And the south driveway is currently operating, we're gonna upgrade that, both signals, we're gonna upgrade both signals. And the, the south, the south approach, or the northbound approach to that south driveway, um, we're gonna lengthen the left turn lane, the exclusive left turn lane to provide additional storage, so that's proposed. And, uh, we have, um, in be- again, as I said previously, because of the, the substantial infrastructure that's out there, uh, the other improvements that we're gonna look at are, um, just some signal timing adjustments, uh, to make it, to optimize, uh, for the, the volumes. But this is what we're proposing, obviously, mass. But this is what we're proposing. Obviously, Mass D O T, this is state highway. We'll be in discussions with them about if there's anything more that they want. But we feel this is what will mitigate our traffic impact due to the project.
Estimate your employees coming in. How do you decide if they're coming from the north or the south?
We have a origin and destination studies based on workforce information from the town of North Andover. As well as looking at the regional, regional areas that likely employees will come from. Amazon won't cite a facility unless there's gonna be employees. They, and that's a, that's a major component to where they cite their, their facilities is the workforce. So, we, we've, in the, in the report, it shows a distribution of where we think they will be coming from based on origin and destination studies and workforce information that the town has.
It's interesting to think about, like, if I were coming on the highway, would I want to get off on Sutton Street? Or would I want to go all the way to exit forty-eight and come down? I'm not sure which would be faster. No, but say you're coming from, if you're coming from the north, you're gonna get off at forty-eight, right? Coming from the north. But I think more people would probably be coming from the south. But if you're coming, but if you're coming from the south, I don't even know if you get off at forty-five and go along Sutton. Because that, that's usually more traffic-y than if you just get on Ward Hill.
We expect Lawrence Lowell to be a, a large source of employees.
So, they'll have a choice of getting off sooner than later.
And, and what we also, in the report, you'll see, although we, for the A D T, we use a factor of two, right? One in, one out for employees. What, what Amazon has found in this, this site supports it is that they usually have a twenty to twenty-five percent shared use, right? That's people carpooling together, ride sharing. They found that using Uber and Lyft pool from certain areas. Employees do that, so that reduces the number of trips. And we're also talking to the regional Transportation Authority about ramping up service to this location. So, that's where we're at, kind of try to stay high level. We'll, we'll have that response to the peer reviewer as soon as we can tidy up with D O T. And we're, we're expecting that this week.
So, I said this to somebody earlier, again, trying to reduce trips. If you even had, you know, a small little van that you ran to the Lawrence, the M B T A station, pick up people, you know, from six to eight A M every fifteen minutes, you might save a lot of trips, you know, for some people. If, and maybe you get some other employees that don't want to have to drive, that have access to that or to Haverhill, wherever.
Yeah, you know, we, again, we've talked with the Transit Authority about ramping up service to here from different locations. And that's, that's an ongoing thing that, that Amazon's really, they do focus on that, particularly during, you know, peak season.
Yeah.
They, they want to make sure it works.
Okay. And obviously, we, we did have the discussion a long time ago, which we're gonna stick to, the trucks going to and from.
North.
North, exit forty-eight. That'll be part of any decision.
Haverhill will be so happy.
We had discussions with the M V R T A back in May about additional service. They indicated to us that they won't be able to determine ridership until things get ramped up. And so, at that time, they'll have the flexibility to, to modify bus routes as, as may be required. Maybe extend our, the hours of operation as well, again, depending on ridership needs and so on. We also have met with the Merrimack Valley Transportation Management Association, T M A, about total demand management, T D M options out there in terms of ride sharing and so on. They suggested to us, six months before operations start commencing, that we meet with them to discuss those, those items as well to, again, to reduce trips and to try to promote ride sharing as well. Just a couple of quick topics. Terms of sewer. Monica, can you go to slide twenty-five? We've discussed this before, but there are two options that we have for sewer. One is to use the existing sewer line that's running behind sixteen hundred Osgood Street. And generally, hugging the commuter rail tracks until you get to the G L S D. You can see sort of the brownish and reddish marks on the site plan that, again, lead to the G L S D. And that's about eighty-eight hundred linear feet in terms of that distance between the G L S D and the, and sixteen hundred Osgood Street. And that connection was made for sixteen hundred Osgood Street back in two thousand and one when sixteen hundred Osgood Street just disconnected the wastewater plant directly connected to the G L S D. Our intention and actually what we'll have to do before operations start is to make sure that either we're connected to the existing system or alternatively, if the public sewer system or the sewer proposed to be extended along Osgood Street is in place, then we'll certainly connect to that sewer line. We're hopeful and confident that funding will be in place for that sewer line that would run about a, a two mile distance from the site southerly to Sutton Street. And we've had discussions with Public Works and, and they had suggested if, if everything schedules out correctly that they might have the public sewer installed almost a year before we would need it. So, we're hopeful of that in terms of that circumstance. In terms of F A A, we filed our Hazards to Navigation filings, both with the F A A and our airspace evaluations with Mass D O T. And so, we should have something back within thirty to forty-five days or so on that matter. I won't get into the issue of glare unless you want me to, but basically, it's the same situation that you had when you first reviewed solar, that there are reflective materials on these panels. And the Lawrence Airport or actually F A A jurisdiction doesn't, doesn't monitor glare unless it's on airport facility. So, we've had discussions with the airport manager and, and he seems to be okay with matters. I won't speak for him, but, but he's been, we've been in constant contact with him in terms of F A A matters. And it was mentioned before by, by John Plant, once we have our trips confirmed with Mass D O T, we'll reach back to the M I P A office. We don't, we're confident that M I P A jurisdiction isn't triggered here, but we'll have to get some confirmation on that.
Because you're based on how many were already there.
They're netting out. That's correct. So, so that's my quick summary on those, those items. Is there anything else I missed? I think we've.
Anything else we need to talk about at the moment?
It was brought to my attention that, I guess, preliminary, preliminary discussions, there was something about how this is gonna be more of a campus and there's gonna be, like, outdoor spaces. Is that? Did I hear wrong?
Well, we're, I mean, we're trying, we're attempting to, to make sure that all of the services and all the landscaping and all the, all what you see is fully integrated into campus-like circumstance. There are certain demands for this particular tenant, for Amazon, in terms of vehicle routes that, that are exclusive. So, in, in some circumstances, it's not, not campus-like because the, the, some of the travel lanes aren't integrated with, between Lot A and Lot B. And that's just purely a service-related requirement of, of that, of Amazon. But, but beyond that, we're integrating the landscaping to make sure it's a cohesive design and throughout the, throughout the property. To the extent, you know, you're looking for a campus, I'm not sure exactly what other items that would make it more of a campus-type situation.
Is there any outdoor gathering space, eating area?
Think of it as two, two distinct components to the, to the project. The office building is separated with landscaping and physically separated with access and upgrades to plantings along, along, it's good street will be taking place. So, as you look into the site, you know, it'll look, the building's getting renovated and the exterior. So, it'll be, you'll, you'll see that from the street. On the Amazon parcel, they do have certain areas around the building for their employees, you know, to, to be outside for lunch or smoking if they still want to. Those are screened off. Those are fenced off. Again, security's a big concern. So, you have, you gotta go through security to get into the building. You can't just walk out of the building somewhere else. So, those are some fenced-in areas in the back in the loading area that they have for that. So, there, there will be benches and tables out there for that.
Is there a kitchen counter? Is there, is there onsite?
No.
So, no Board of Health with?
Lot A will also have, I believe, those types of tables.
The intent would be outdoor.
I believe as part of the architectural drawings, there's gonna be, so they're opening up the backside of the office building.
Yes, if you go back to slide three.
So, there'll be like a, a front on both the front and the back. And on the backside, there's some addition of outdoor seating and tables in a patio area outside the back door that are in the architectural drawing stage. So, yeah, Nate, right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Apologize, you guys aren't looking ragged, but in this area, this would be ultimately a second main entrance to the building with, you know, landscaped areas.
Landscaping and hardscape to match, kind of match the front.
With the addition of some picnic tables and some outdoor amenities space there.
And if you're looking for us to program that out a little bit more, we could, we could take a look at that.
Good for tonight. You guys got it there?
It's the morning now.
Yeah, it's morning now.
Thanks for taking us this evening.
Thank you.
And we'd like to continue to November twenty-sixth.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue to, till November twenty-sixth. Thank you. Can we get a motion to approve meeting minutes from September seventeenth, October first, and October fifteenth?
As moved. Second.
On favor?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
On favor?
Aye.